Uh, yes, back to back night, folks. Just our work is never done. Um. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three signing of the Acts of two thousand twenty three, extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general, general law, chapter thirty eight, subsection twenty. Until March thirty first, two thousand twenty five, this meeting of the Channel Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number, one, five zero eight, nine four five, four four one zero, conference ID two zero three, three eight six, four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel eight and ten seventy two, despite our best efforts, we we may not be able to provide real time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item of the of the evening is to establish a quorum, uh, Select Board Member De Castro.
Present.
Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present, so we are all here this evening. I will start with public announcements and agenda item requests. Is there anything from the board? Is there anyone in the uh, live audience tonight? Is there anyone online who has a public announcement or agenda item request?
No.
All right. Next, public comments on our business agenda. And let me just briefly run down our our formal business agenda tonight. Item A, FY two thousand twenty five budget review, twenty twenty four annual town meeting article review vote. The Town Department, for the Natural Resources, Community Development, Information Technology, Parent IT, closed parent, division, General Government Divisions, other slash undesigned, undesignated, and Community Services. Item B, updates to Town Manager's Budget Recommendations if needed. Item C, draft warrant articles. One, waterfront bond article reauthorization. Two, dredging. Three, prior year bills, parent, uh, free cash, closed parent. Consult, item four, consolidated revolving funds authorization, which includes the Wolf Fund. Item five, airport revolving fund authorization, Master General Law, Chapter forty four, section fifty three, E one slash two. Uh, item six, stabilization appropriation per policies, and in parentheses, transfer from overlay surplus. Item seven, other post employment benefits, which is referred to OPEB, uh, funding, an in print, uh, tax levy. And then item eight, airport capital articles. We have A, capital municipal airport electric vehicle, EV charging stations, and item B, Chatham Municipal Airport Capital Improvement Projects. We will wrap up our evening, um, with the executive session, but, um, items A, B, and C. Um, at this time, I will, uh, open the floor up to any public com, I mean, public comment on our business agenda. Anyone in the house have any questions or comments? I don't think so. Is there anyone online?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Gibbs.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, um, it's really difficult to comment on such an expansive agenda because I'm not sure what the scope of the presentations are going to be or what questions you're going to ask. So I'm just gonna wing it and, um, in no particular order. As it relates to the natural resources, uh, projections, um, there are apparently six departments that are under natural resources, but in reading through the summaries, uh, there, there's no total of expenses for that division, and, um, it doesn't show an increase over last year. Uh, there are a bunch of numbers, but it's really hard to go through and figure out what the impact's gonna be. Uh, it would also apply to the general government budget, uh, which has, um, uh, the same issues. You know, there's a lot of list of spending, but, uh, no, no numbers. Um, in s, in terms of the community development, um, budget, uh, there, there, there is a whole bunch of stuff that's, uh, included in there, social services, et cetera. One of the things is the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Seaside Links Pump Station. And so I guess I'd like to know, what is that hundred and fifty thousand for? Is that design work to put in a pump station? Um, and how much will the pump station eventually cost? And is it being put in there solely for seaside links, the golf course? Uh, and why would we be putting in a pump station for a golf course if we're under water constrictions? And then I would like to know why it's under, uh, recreation and beaches rather than being coming from the Water and Sewer Department? Because that, I would assume, is generally where that money would come from. And then I think, uh, how much revenue do we generate from the golf course? Uh, because we also have to pay a management company to do it. So I think the finances behind it and as to why we think that that's an appropriate expense at this point. And, uh, then as it relates to Channel eighteen, or, or IT, excuse me. Uh, one of the problems I've had is when you go to the, uh, budget book, um, uh, the public can't get onto it after the first page. If it says you wanna, if you wanna see the complete financial report, you go to log in. Uh, it doesn't recognize your name or password, and when you want to reset your password, it says we can't do it. So we can't, we don't have access to what you have, so I would hope that could be worked out. And then there's, uh, also the fact that Channel eighteen is going to be changed again to Channel one oh seven two. Uh, one oh seven two does not exist for many people in Chatham. Uh, if your Comcast boxes are at all obsolete, uh, you have to get new boxes. And, um, even if only a quarter of the people in Chatham need new boxes, you're talking three thousand boxes. And I can assure you, there are not three thousand new Comcast boxes on Cape Cod, anywhere. And it would be a real hassle for people, and I think it's of concern that people who do not have computers and rely on watching the meetings on TV are not going to be able to do it. Uh, so I would hope, I, I'd like to know why we, our channel is changing again. And, um, is there any way that we can stay on eighteen or another channel that does not require upgrades to Comcast boxes? Okay, that's that. And then as it relates to, uh, the electric, um, charging stations, EV charging stations at the airport. Um, I guess my opinion would be that a hundred, even if we get reimbursed and it still costs us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I, I just can't imagine us spending that kind of money to put charging stations, uh, at the airport. The only people that are going to be using those charging stations are people who have planes, plug in their cars, and go flying for a couple hours. And I guess there should be a, a, a bigger conversation about electric vehicles. You know, how are they, I assume they're powered by gas, uh, or electric or wind power or whatever. Um, and i- in terms of, you know, uh, town cars that we're buying, you know, what are the warranties on the cars? Are they leased? Uh, because there are a lot of major expenses with that. Um, and, uh, so particularly for the airport. You know, if someone comes in and plugs in their car and then they disappear, there's no place to go unless they want to sit out at the police station for a while, cooling their heels. So I, I can't imagine why we would even conceive of spending that kind of money uh, to basically just be another benefit for pilots. Because no one else can park their car there unless they bring a second car and then just leave it there. And if they leave it there and the charge, the car's charged and they don't unplug it, then what? You know, does it sit there all day? So I would hope those, um, questions would be addressed. And then finally, um, I think there has to be a lot more discussion on this, uh, eleven point four million for waterfront infrastructure, this bonding. Um, it, I, it came out of left field. I think everybody was really surprised by that. We thought we were, you know, well on our way to completing those projects. Um, and I don't know how the board can prioritize spending where as you go through this process. We're only three weeks from closing the warrant, and we still don't have projections, uh, over the next five years about the spending and the impact on, you know, property assessments and the impact on, on the tax rate. Uh, there was that one graph that was produced for the, uh, warrant article, uh, for the eleven point four that showed where the borrowing's going to occur for each of the five years, and that's what we should be seeing uh, for all of the spending that we're gonna be doing, so that Town Meeting understands uh, what we're getting into down the road over the next five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else online has a public, um, a question or comment?
No.
Nope, all right. To the board, uh, business agenda, item A, FY two thousand twenty five budget review, twenty twenty four annual town meeting article review. Um, who's gonna kick it off?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, we'll have, uh, Carrie Mazerol, our Finance Director, kick it off. And also, we're still working off of the budget transmittal to the Board of January twenty third. That was also, uh, presented in the packet and uploaded for that meeting. And Carrie will also use the digital budget book if she needs to, to show, uh, any changes to what's, uh, what has been presented. I'm sorry, what will be presented in addition to what you've already seen on the, on the twenty third. So I just want to put that out there, that the, some of the totals are not included because we're working off a previous document that we had posted. So Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Uh, Carrie Mazerol, Finance Director. So, um, we'll start with, um, the Natural Resources. Um, tonight, um, so we have Natural Resource Department, which is comprised of six divisions and other, and three committees. Health, Natural Resources, Conservation, Pleasant Bay Management, Harbor Master, Coastal Resources, Shellfish, South Coast Harbor Plan Committee, Shellfish Advisory Committee, and Waterways Advisory Committee, which makes up three percent of the operating budget. The Natural Resources Operating Budget is presented at two point three million for FY twenty twenty five, an increase of eighty seven thousand dollars over the current fiscal year budget. And we have Greg Berman, the Natural Resources, um, Department Head, here to go over the budgets for you.
Thank you, Greg Berman, with Natural Resources, and I will try to be relatively brief. Um, but there are five main divisions within Natural Resources. Our Health, Conservation, Harbor Master, Coastal Resources, and Shellfish. And then we do have some other things within the department, but not necessarily divisions, and I'll really get into, to all these at some point. Uh, just have a couple brag points, kind of, from each of our divisions. Uh, just over the last year, the Health Division took the lead on the opioid settlement funds. And we currently have a recovery coach working on that out of the police station. Conservation has three new regulations over the last year to help air environmental stewardship. The Harbor Master, every year has a significant amount of shoreline, uh, that they monitor and floats and navigation aids that they work with. Coastal Resources, uh, has worked on critical dredging projects, working on renewing the South Coastal Harbor Plan. And as I'll get into later, has been very successful with grants to defray some of the costs of these waterfront infrastructure projects. And the quantities involved with Shellfish, uh, two and a half million cohorts, some planted under nets, um, some overwintered, and, um, certainly appreciated by all those who enjoy shellfish in town. Uh, within the last year, we had our first Red Tide event that was, uh, handled. I wasn't here at the time, but I heard it was handled as well as could be, and we're, um, have policies in place to take advantage of our experiences now. Here are some of the grants that I had mentioned to help defray costs. Our Coastal Resource Director has worked getting a million dollars for the Seaport Economic Council Grant. And this is for some of the waterfront, waterfront improvements at Ninety Bridge. Uh, we also got a half million dollar state dredging grant. And then a couple smaller coastal zone managing, management resilient grants, having to do with Jackknife Beach and some of the shoaling and erosion over at Stage Harbor. Uh, if you have any follow up questions about any of those, I'm happy to get deeper into it as we go along.
Great, thank you.
Uh, going over departmental budgets, these are the vehicles that are currently within our department. We're not requesting any new vehicles at this time, um, but part of the justification for some of our increased maintenance costs is even a relatively minor increase in costs across that many vehicles will kind of add up over time. So as our Finance Director mentioned, Department of Natural Resources is three percent of the overall budget. And then here's the breakdown of our department itself, that Harbor Master kind of takes the lion's share there. And Pleasant Bay Management is, um, kind of a relatively small volume of that, but that's because of our, uh, MOU with the other towns. We're only partially funding, um, that alliance. Getting into staffing costs, and I, I do hear, um, comments, uh, from our online audience that, you know, these numbers may be hard to read, uh, as we are right here, but I'll try to go through them. And basically, in the entire department, we have sixteen full time employees, one part time, one intermittent, one stipend, and I have up to thirty nine. Because if we had everyone who we, uh, uh, need, we would have thirty nine, but it is very difficult to fill a lot of our seasonal positions. And then we just have our three seasonal part time, uh, supplemented with senior tax for the sticker office.
Greg, what are those seasonal positions? Cause that's a lot. Can you just break them down?
It is, and I'll actually break them down by individual.
Thank you.
Division, if that works. Um, so there's, there's no seasonal in health, but that's our first one. Um, and I won't necessarily read all of these, but I'll get into those seasonals that you're, uh, requesting. And then we have our, uh, cost increases just between fiscal year twenty four and twenty five. So Conservation has a lot of those seasonal employees, including the bird monitoring, our, uh, habitat, uh, conservation plan, and shorebird monitors. Our Harbor Master also has a significant number of seasonal staff, um, between the Assistant Harbor Masters and, uh, the warfarinure positions. Coastal Resources has our, uh, Herring Warden, which is a stipend, so not seasonal, but also our Town Landing Officers, which are seasonal. And then Shellfish also has a, a, a large seasonal influx, uh, to deal with their, uh, shellfish propagation and enforcement. So that was our, uh, salary, and we go through expense costs. I don't have it broken out as a total, but this is just the difference between fiscal year twenty four and twenty five over on the right. And then, uh, this is specifically the Health Division, and those are the three items in your budget book that actually did change to create that number. Um, so basically, the, the purchase of services have a lot to do with the Barnstable County Hazardous Waste Collection Program. And we did have to bump that up nine thousand dollars across the year. We don't know in a given year exactly how much it's going to be because it's based on what comes in and how much of it. We were able to, uh, take seven thousand from our professional consulting and apply it up to that, uh, just based on monies that weren't spent as much last year to try to make up for some of that. And then we do have a new employee, uh, starting and wanna cover certification fees for training. Conservation, um, just one change between the years, five thousand dollars, and this is part of the Mass Audubon Contract, um, to hopefully get, you know, more monitoring on beach raking, getting cleaner beaches and more often, and protecting the habitat and birds at the same time. Harbor Master, um, as you probably know, our Harbor Master is retiring relatively soon. So we're going to get someone, uh, new in that position. That person may need training. So that's why we have an increased cost for some of those mandatory trainings. Um, there's a significant number of vehicles and equipment within there, and costs have gone up for everything. And then some relatively minor increase for additional trainings for some of those staff. Coastal Resources had no change between the years. Shellfish had a variety of very minor changes. We were able to reduce, uh, or see our reduced fuel costs last year and apply that to some of our other costs. And then the increase in printing for permits and Red Tide and, um, uh, a new employee starting again to get, uh, yeah, some of these folks to the meetings to be able to, to share their experience and get. Um, this is our capital request, and now we're moving out of operational. So you can see Harbor Master has most of that, unless we include one of the warrant articles. But I'm gonna try not to talk too much about the warrant articles because those are later this evening. Um, so under our, uh, Natural Resources, this will be in Health, this is our MS four, our Stormwater Management Plan. So this covers anything as minor as, you know, mutt mits to prevent that type of, uh, debris going into our waterway, uh, through redesigning stormwater systems. But this is a mandatory federal system for MS four, and this isn't a, a new request. This has kind of been going on for many years. This is another one, uh, under Conservation that's been going on for many years. We've kind of had a, a standing ten thousand dollar ask to, uh, manage our conservation lands. This can be anything from, you know, removing large trees that may be blocking trails to, uh, various equipment and, um, uh, staking, flagging, fencing, that sort of thing. The Harbor Master has more items, and I'll just go into them briefly. Um, an engine replacement, pretty self explanatory, flatbed trailers, a minor expense, but needed to be able to transport the moorings. Our floodgate assessment and schematic design. So some of you may have attended, um, one of the floodgate meetings where background work was done. But the next step is to actually model how that flow might go in or out of the tiegate to try to, uh, give some guidance to the Harbor Master about when to deploy it, if to deploy it, that sort of thing. And then a knuckle boom for the flatbed truck, to that image down on the lower right. Um, because our Harbor Master does move a lot of the docks, moorings, uh, in-house to save money. And this is, uh, gonna be a safer working piece of equipment to be able to move that equipment.
Have you had one of those before?
No, right now, it's, uh, more of an A-frame over that swings over the, uh, cab of the truck. And this would be, you know, a, a, a much higher working load, so it's, it's safer in being able to, to move more easily. Uh, next is Mitchell River Bridge Maintenance. Uh, this is one where we've had it over multiple years. Um, and really, this is to, uh, cover, um, relatively large maintenance requests. So this is a very expensive bridge, very. So this is a very expensive bridge, very expensive to replace. And if a piece goes, we wanted to have a fund ready to go to cover that so it didn't have to come out of some emergency fund. This is also used for electric service where people have to come down from very specialized electrical companies from out of state. So any minor repair is still pretty expensive. But the idea is to have a fund that can cover relatively major replacements. So you've seen this one before, you'll probably see it again.
Jeff, got a question?
How functional has the bridge been lately in terms of its opening and closing? How are we doing with that, Greg? And maybe you don't know or not, but I'll ask others that might be here. Is it working?
I mean, I can check with Ted too. But as far as I'm aware, it's a functioning bridge. If it wasn't functioning, it would be on our repair list. But it sounds like...
Yeah, well, we've had issues in the past. That's why I ask. It's a beautiful bridge, but it's very high maintenance, if you will. Because it is a wood structure. It's not a cement and or metal structure.
Right, and expensive to fix, temperamental, but very pretty.
But very handsome.
Yeah, a lot of the issues that we were wrestling with with the expansion of the wood, that seems to have been addressed. The shaving that we did a number of times, you know, initially. I think we're at the stage where the bridge hopefully has swelled to the level it's going to swell. And right now, it seems to be, according to the Harbor Master's office, working quite well.
And hopefully, the dredging we're doing around the corner won't disturb anything bridge wise.
I hope not.
Thanks, Ted.
Navigation aids are a standing request every year. The offloading davit for the south jug. We have one for the north jug. And this has to do with the increase in height to make some resiliency for sea level rise, but also makes it harder to unload at low tide. So this is an extra davit for safety over on that south side. And then just a sponsor replacement for the rib and a boat trailer for one of the 27 foot boats. Right now, they're only using one, and it doesn't fit very well. So they'd like to have at least one that works. Moving over to Coastal Resources, the dredging program is something that you used to see in the capital budget as a $100,000 request and then a separate warrant article. This is actually just going to be a warrant article that I'll discuss later for the $400,000. So that's not actually in our, you know, this particular part of the budget. The Oyster Pond Furlong Ramp Reconstruction. This would be for the engineer permitting and construction of that concrete ramp, about the same footprint. And it's, you know, obviously separate to our Town Landing Infrastructure Improvements. If it was minor repairs, that's what the improvement fund would be used for. But this is a relatively more pricey that needs its own capital request. So that's it for the department. But we also have some, you know, non-division aspects to our department, part of which is the Pleasant Bay Management. And there is an increase there between fiscal year '24 and '25. A lot of that has to do with the increase in water quality monitoring costs. And again, we're paying, I feel like it's somewhere in the 30% range. So this is not the entire cost of increase, but it's spread across the four towns. All of our committees don't actually have a change between fiscal year '24 and '25, but we did move some out of purchasing services over to temporary wages. But the overall budget is the same between those two years for our three committee supports. And this is mostly for minutes and assistance with that sort of thing. Our sticker office has proposed as level funded. This is our three part time seasonal staff, supported by senior tax work off. And for bang for your buck, this is what they brought in last year. So, you know, significant amounts of money coming in for a hardworking office downstairs during that time of the year. And that's it for the presentation at this stage. You'll see me back in a little bit for warrant articles and happy to chat now more if you like.
Any questions at the moment?
I have a couple.
Please, go ahead.
Is Paul Whitman the assistant conservation?
He's promoted.
He's been promoted.
Promoted, yeah. And I wanted to ask the Harbor Master Department, I don't see either Sue Acunello and/or Stewart here, but how's the new mooring system working? How's it functioning, the mooring renewal system?
The mooring info software system?
Yeah, I mean, I know that the date for renewing one's mooring has been pushed up. And that's great. They put out notifications for that because the date has changed. But just wonder how it's working.
Yeah, I've heard from Skip Davis, who has interacted with that mooring info system, that they're very fond of it. Both he and Jason have indicated that it's a very functional system. And they've actually encouraged us to look at it for some other aspects within our department. So, you know, we're always exploring ways to try to improve, make things easier. And this is one that, you know, already existed before I got here. But we are, at least, you know, as I've heard, it's worked well in the past. They seem to have it under control now.
Have we been able to pull any data for information from that mooring software? I know that that was part of it, was to be able to glean information and be more efficient. I'm not putting you on the spot. If you don't know the answer, that's fine. But it'd be interesting to hear like an update from the department on how we're utilizing the system as, you know, to just get better information about how that would work for another operation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Shereen. Prior to your arrival, Greg, there was quite a swirl around moorings and their management here. And we revamped the entire mooring regs and stuff. So and we invested quite heavily in the system. And it was advertised as we were bringing efficiencies and greater efficiencies to the department. Make folks more productive and get the moorings turned around, mooring renewals turned around with greater alacrity. And I don't know whether that's been happening or not. And I think Shereen's question is a good one. Not to be a Debbie Downer, but I have two really positive comments. I want to highlight this fact. And this is in our land management report on conservation. And this is a little tongue in cheek, but not really. North Beach achieved the highest piping plover productivity in the state for piping plover chicks registering an impressive 2.2 chicks per nest. In contrast, the 2022 state average was 1.31 fledglings per pair, based on comprehensive data collected from 99% of pairs. So our land management folks on the beach are doing a great job. And, you know, it's kind of tongue in cheek, but not. They really do a great job monitoring. And they do get the beach open as fast as they can, but they also protect the plovers that serve their protection. The other thing I want to highlight as well is, and it's been mentioned, but the phenomenal dollar value of grants that we've generated in the coastal department. 500 grand for 90 Bridge Street. Resiliency grant for shoaling and erosion in the vicinity of Stage Harbor, $94,540. Seaport Economic Council grant for construction funds for waterfront improvements at 90 Bridge Street, $1 million. And coastal resiliency grant for erosion protection and wetland restoration at Jackknife Beach, $117,000. So $1.7 million coming our way that did not come out of the tax rate and/or capital funds and/or reserves or anything. So really, really good job. And I think you've got to beat our chest about it a little bit, or a lot. Thanks.
Shereen.
I also wanted to take note, and I know you breezed right by it, Greg, but we have 2,820 recreational shellfish permits. And we have a wild shellfish reef in town. I know we have a propagation program that supports that. But I think that's fabulous that folks can come, scratch some cohogs, and go home and make dinner and, you know, tell a story behind it. So I think that was, it's really great management from that department.
No, I've been very impressed with all of the divisions in the department. And, you know, we're not stopping, whether it's, you know, our propagation efforts, our potential, you know, expanded upweller facilities, and also searching for additional grants, which I'll get into on the next step.
Good.
All right, we'll see you shortly.
Hi. So next we have community development. The community development budget is presented at 1.1 million for FY '25, an increase of 57.7 over the current fiscal year budget. The Community Development Department is comprised of Community Development and Economic Development. You guys heard from Economic Development last night. So the Community Development Division presented includes a $1.019 million budget, up 6% from 2024. Includes $886,000 for salaries and 132 in operating expenses. And I have Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development, to go over the budget for you.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development. As most of you know, but for those that don't, Community Development oversees the divisions of building, planning, and now housing. My presentation is fairly short, although our budget is a little bit different. The, all divisions within Community Development are under one budget and not separated out the way that the Natural Resource Budget is. So again, as Carrie mentioned, our budget for FY '25 is $1,019,441. Personnel expenses, $886,641. And operating expenses at $132,800. And again, it's $57,799 or 6.01 over the 2024 budget. Our personnel service increases are $44,799. And our request for operating expenses increases are $13,000 for FY '25. Under the personnel, our Community Development consists of nine full time, and actually, sorry, there was a typo there. It's two part time employees. The increase of $44,799 in personnel, it's for contractual wages, steps, longevity, and temporary wages and overtime. The operating expenses that we've requested increases to is one is for publications and subscriptions. We believe that there will be a new building code coming out this year. And we would like to purchase new code books. Those code books are on actually $2,000 apiece. And so we've requested an increase of $3,000 for this coming fiscal year. That'll be a one time expense. Again, we'll request it again in the future as new building codes come out. And then the purchase of service increase that we're requesting is for $10,000. And we use our purchase of services for a few different reasons. But the primary is that we pay the town of Barnstable to conduct our weights and measures program. And so that is about a $13,000 expense each year. And it goes up incrementally with each fiscal year. The other thing that we do, and we have this money for items such as, for example, this year, we utilized funds for, when the Affordable Housing Trust was looking at the additional purchase of the Buckley property, we used the funds for the environmental site assessment for the appraisal and things like that. And so having those funds available for, you know, for various items that come up over the year is valuable to us. Just a little bit more about the department. We processed over 1,000 building permits, 1,136 plumbing and gas permits, 984 electrical permits. And our inspectors performed over 5,000 combined inspections relating to all of those permits. Our regulatory boards held 91 meetings and reviewed a combined application, 383 applications for planning, zoning, historical, and the HBDC. I don't have any capital requests this year, so that actually concludes my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at the moment? Jeff?
Do we have new employees coming? Or we have inspectors anywhere flying around, new requests?
We had made a request for a potential inspector for this year. We're not sure if the building code, the new building code may require that a local building inspector do short term rentals on an annual basis. That building code isn't out yet, so we felt that that's a potential request for the coming year of FY '26.
And then I noted in the comments in the board book, we received a grant from the Mass EV IP for the installation of EV charging stations at Elders Garage. So is that going to happen? That's in the plan? We'll hear about that?
Yep, those are actually in process. The design is being done currently, and they'll be installed with the construction. And they should be finalized when the entire project is finalized later this spring.
Is that one, two, three, five? How many?
We received, we have, well, there's two, Level 2 and two, Level 3. And each side has two, each unit has two ports, so there'll be eight.
Oh, great. Eight ports for people to plug into. The Level 1s and 2s mean nothing to me, but that's okay. All right, thank you, Katie. Thanks.
No problem.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, again. Originally, our IT director was going to be here to present his budget. But that was last week. And we had the storm, so then it bumped this weekend. He is not available, so I will be presenting the IT budget today. The IT budget is in the general government. It consists of, it's presented at $938,900 for FY '25, an increase of $79,787 over the current fiscal year. There is $438,900 in salaries and $500,000 in operating expenses. This is a little bit of information about the stats for IT. The IT department currently manages approximately 70 laptops, 12 desktops, 78 desk phones, 30 printers, 12 access points, 15 switches, and 24 different software applications. They worked on 400 plus help desk tickets submitted by staff and the public. The town website had 625, 769 views, 157, 927 users with an average engagement time of 1 minute and 26 seconds with an overall event count of 2,576,304. That's a lot. Again, this is their budget for FY '25. It's $938,900. The salaries and wages consist of $438,900, which is an increase of $19,536.72. And operational expenses at $500,000, an increase of $60,250.
Jeff, got a question?
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, just the increase in the operational expenses. It's 50K on one line item in the book. And then I guess in total, it's 60. But what is that? What's driving that? Salaries, I think we understand.
Okay, so the salaries, I'll skip right over that then. You got that. So let's see, where were you looking?
Yeah.
So purchase of services, up 50,000?
Yep.
Okay. So let me see, let me look at my notes here. Increases for IT, up $60,000. The purchase of services, up 50,000. They've increased due to prices of software increasing 5 to 10% and adding new software. I'm going to go over the new software in the next slide.
Thanks, yeah, thank you.
They had an increase of $500 for continuing education for staff to attend any training or extra conferences that they may need. There is an extra, I think there's a new employee that just started a couple of years ago, right? Capital outlay has increased 10,000. This is for new software that the departments need during the fiscal year that have not been budgeted for. So when we go through the budget process, we budget for what we think we're going to need. But sometimes things come up and they need something extra. So this is what that's for. So, and includes hardware as well. And then the vehicle and equipment maintenance. This was actually a budgeted line of 250. And they got rid of the $250. They don't have a vehicle in IT, so they got rid of that. They don't use it. So this is the software. So I'll try to go over this the best I can. On that side of the screen where it says software... On that side of the screen where it says software cost consolidation, some of the software was consolidated. So it used to cost $21,550, I'm sorry, $570, and it now costs $10,500, which is a savings of $11,070. The new software they have, they have a parking enforcement, that's $22,500. Debt book for 15. Neptune utility billing for 12. Assessing software upgrade for 3,000. Electronic voting system for 1,000. So the new software is around 53,000. And then the change, so it's about 42,000 extra. The capital request for IT, Channel 18, this is an annual request for $20,000. This is for upgrades for Channel 18 equipment. This covers any equipment or ongoing software needs in that department. Core network upgrade for 50,000 is an upgrade of the main network core located at the fire department. This core serves all the town buildings. This is for the town's firewall, internet, and router. Land management assessment and GIS, this is another annual request for 50,000. It's to provide funds to allow to support town-wide GIS and mapping software. And then the last one is town computers and technology equipment. This is another annual request. This allocation is needed to replace technology used in the various departments to include laptops, desktop computers, monitors, switchers, and servers, and any hardware for the, then this covers the entire town. And that's it? That's the last?
Just a quickie, Mr. Chairman. What is our network in town? What's the name of the network? Is it a municipal?
We have Ryan Darman. Ryan, are you, he's our IT manager. Are you able to answer that question for us?
Yeah, what did you mean by that question, Jeff?
No, I just, what kind of network do we have? Is it like a municipal, all the municipalities have it, or it's dedicated to us, all our town buildings, all tied in?
Oh, yeah.
Internet, et cetera? Yeah. Is there?
Yeah, so our ISP is our internet service provider is OpenCape. And we have a town municipal fiber system, so it's all owned by us. Before Comcast, we used Comcast Inet. And a big project in the last like three years was the municipal fiber project. So we own it all.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, as long as you're here, Ryan. I wanted to put the question that Ms. Gibbs asked about our migration from Channel 18 to 72 and the need for new, I call them set-top boxes. I know that's an old term, but in any event, can you comment on that? Does that sound familiar to you?
Yeah, yeah, I can a little. So yeah, she had concerns, I believe she said 1072 doesn't exist for many people in Chatham. So the boxes are free of charge on the basic cable plan. Standards have changed on that equipment, so basically if the box doesn't have an HDMI port, it needs to be upgraded, and this is necessary to view HD channels. Just an example of why that's so, like, Chatham TV has been HD-capable for, I believe, over three or four years now, even though we were broadcasting in SD or cable casting. And that's because SD equipment is considered legacy, it's too costly, end-of-life, or just not available for purchase anymore. So in talks with Comcast, I know that that has been the issue they've had too at their head end, just maintaining SD equipment, or just even finding it. So on top of providing higher-definition video for everybody, it's also a standard change that's necessary, you know, to move over that way. I know Shawna sent out an email. I just want to see if there's any more good information. People that have a plan that's higher than the basic cable plan will receive these channels, but it's mentioned that they would benefit from going and getting an X1 box, which would replace their current box. And it's the same cost as legacy equipment. So it won't cost anymore to get that X1 box.
Thank you.
Lastly, too, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, thanks for that. I, 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 I've tempted to ask for that in English, but I think I'll let it go.
I'm sorry. One other thing, too, is that the, from my understanding with Comcast, it's not possible to retake Channel 18. I know that was a question Elaine had.
Yeah, I think that was the basic question. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Did you guys have any more questions for IT?
Any more questions?
No, I have a comment. I think the IT department in Chatham is a strength. I think we've done, we've come a long way in the last two or three years, four years or so, and I think, you know, it's not perfect, but we've come a long way.
Agreed.
I can't speak to the length of time, but I, I, I think they do a lot, and are very flexible, and they accommodate a lot of demands that are, that are very challenging.
Yeah, inexhaustible. They're, they're everywhere all the time, and late at night, early in the morning, and make themselves very available, so, great department.
I agree.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go to the next department. I'm going to start, go to community services, and then I'll do general government after. So the community and social services budget is presented at $2,851,063 for FY25, an increase of $3,997 over the current fiscal year budget. This includes Center of Active Living, Human Services, Recreation and Beaches, Lighthouse Beach. And I have Leah Lacrosse, the Community Services Director, and Amy Howell, the Recreation Director, here to present their budgets.
Thank you, Carrie. Good evening, everyone. Leah Lacrosse, Director of Community Services. As you know, the, the Community Services Department, now going into its second year, consists of the Council on Aging, or the Center for Active Living, Recreation and Beaches, and that includes Lighthouse Beach. We also have the Human Services Committee. Just to, to go over our numbers a little bit, in 2023, the Chatham, the Center for Active Living had 1,238 unduplicated participants, which is a huge jump from years past. 177 active outreach clients, which I can tell you, they're probably all of them in the past couple of months. 794 total unduplicated program participants. So that means that, so with 4,954 units of attendance, it means 794 people had a total of 4,954 units of attendance. Total unduplicated transportation participants is 123, and we provided 2,656 one-way rides and grocery deliveries. Our transportation program has doubled, more than doubled, in the past year. We're, right now, we're an average, I think a year ago, we would have, excluding the day program, we would have maybe two rides a day. I think we're close to anywhere between 27 and 34 rides per day.
Leah, why is that? Do you, do you have a rationale behind that?
We do. We got the word out. We made sure that we marketed it like crazy, and once people got used to taking it, I think like anything else, they were intimidated by getting into a van and being a passenger. But once they tried it, they use it quite often, and the increase in medical appointments, dental appointments is huge. And, and also the increase in participants in the day program, I think contributes to that as well.
So you're servicing the need of the community. It's not, it's not marketing just to get people to do it. I mean, there was a need there, and you found out that, and then you marketed towards that need.
There was a huge need. There was like chemotherapy appointments, they were taking cabs and Ubers. So once they realized it was available, now they use it quite often.
It's terrific. Thank you.
Sure. Our highlights of 2023, for the seventh consecutive year, we had a partnership with the Family Pantry. We had a 40% growth rate this year, so we're now serving 36, as of today, 37 distinct Chatham families. And in 2023, we distributed 1,131 bags of groceries. The Chatham Better Together, a program which is something we're very proud of. We wrote a grant for the Massachusetts Council on Aging, and we have a cohort of 30 people that meet once a month, and we do, this was a grant that we use to combat loneliness and isolation. This group is very close. They, we very rarely have people miss in attendance, and they go on field trips. They have, they have a nice lunch provided by a local provider every, every month, and this program is 100% free of charge to them because of this grant. And right now, we're very excited that the Friends of the Council on Aging has asked us to prepare a proposal for them to cover it going forward, so we don't have to give up the program because it's been so successful. We welcomed Anna Milan as the new programming communications coordinator. Anna has started working along with our fabulous Channel 18 team, has started the, she has taken our newsletter electronic, so for people who don't want to read the newsletter, they can watch it on TV. She goes through the newsletter as well as, it's called Flash TV, and she also interviews someone local on that too, so you can get to know the local townspeople. It's great. Transportation, as I said, saw a two-and-a-half times increase in the number of rides provided, 486 rides to and from the Orleans Supportive Day Program, so that's big. We talked about the other statistics there. So for this year, our personnel saw a difference, our salaries and wages of $9,538. And so a total increase of 3.11%, and that was due to contractual wage and step increases. And we also had an increase request for, in office supplies, meeting dues and travels, and the Orleans Day Program fee increase. They raised their fees to $90. And so that, that has taken us, that, that has, that is the cause of that increased request. Human Services, recommendations overview this year for FY25, they are, they have made a request to the town manager for $336,250 to fund, to fund organizations that put in grant requests. And they are also requested that the childcare voucher program be raised from 100,000 to 125,000 this year for an 8% increase. We have one capital request at the Council of Aging, and as silly as it seems, we're asking for one commercial dishwasher. It's, the people think there's a dishwasher there, it's a sanitizer. And so when we have, like, say for Chatham Better Together for those 30 meals, it takes a few people about two hours before all the dishes are washed, and then put in the sanitizer and put away. It's really a, we feel it's a very waste, a big waste of resources. So we're asking for a commercial dishwasher. The funds that, the cost that I've researched on that, they're anywhere from 6,000 to 28,000. So we thought this was a little safe. These were the, this was more in the, the price range that we're looking at. And that's, and now I'm going to bring Amy up to, to continue the rest. Thank you.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I, I want to ask, I'm going to take us back to last night, and, and I'd like to ask how it is, as I understand it, we have a grant request for $274,000 for a putative adult daycare program that, again, notionally would start on the 1st of July, which is this fiscal year that we're talking about, as I understand it. If that grant request is less than what we've asked for, or doesn't come through, or is late, or whatever, my question is, how do we, assuming that we're otherwise capable of organizing the adult daycare program, never mind where it is, how do we ensure that we're going forward with that, whether the, 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 the grant request comes through on time, or otherwise is less than what we asked for, as opposed to not getting it, or it's being late, and saying, well, we'll put that off until '26?
That's a good question. We, we did not put in a request for any staff, any new staff, additional staffer this year. At the time that we, that I submitted the budget, we weren't looking at to, to start the Supportive Day Program this year. And we, with the grant opportunity, we felt we couldn't pass that up, so we went in for the grant. I think that the only way that we would still get it into the budget this year is if the select board put that staffing in. The rest of it, we could put together through our, through other funding sources. But as far as the staffing, we wouldn't have the staffing to do it this year if we don't get the grant unless changes were made to the budget.
What are the prospects of getting the grant?
Your guess is as good as mine. You know, you can, the new starts, we had to, I had to partner with the Dennis COA. They won't let you apply for the grant as a new start unless you partner with a COA who has experience. As you know, Brenda Vasquez has years and years of experience in Dennis. She has a great day program, and she agreed to partner with us and mentor us, and she wrote a very nice letter of support for us for this grant. So I'm hoping that that stands out to them. But, you know, with a grant application, it's a 50/50 chance. I will say, you know, I, in my grant-writing experience, I've had about a 96% success rate, so I'm hopeful, but at any time, it, you know, we, it's not a guarantee, certainly.
When do we find out?
That was, I, I spoke with our town manager this morning, and throughout all the application, you're not, surprisingly, you're not allowed to write and ask questions, or call and ask questions. You can only look at the frequently asked questions. Nowhere in that grant application or online did it say when the decision would be made. But we had to submit a detailed implementation plan, and I had to do it date by date by date, the different steps, and it wouldn't let you start that implementation plan until June. So if I-
Of this year?
Of this year. So the funds have to be completely spent by March of 2025. So I'm assuming that we should hear relatively quickly on that, if they want us to begin our implementation plan in June.
Okay, I, I, I'll just, I mean, you put it to me. I, I, I would like to see $274,000 in the budget that, 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 you know, has some sort of a hook on it that is key to getting the grant. But I, 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 I mean, it sounds, if we ask for the grant, but we don't have the staffing, and it's got to be spent by next year, that's a nullity from my perspective.
Well, they do ask you, I had to submit a recruitment plan in there as well, and I had to take, because the state is well aware of the recruitment issues in Massachusetts of recruiting qualified staff for all sorts of things. So I had to do a step-by-step recruitment plan in there, so they do give you time allotted for that recruitment.
Past March of 2025?
No, they don't give you past March. Although, a correction, it does say, if there are circumstances like staffing that do not make, that prohibit you from being able to open according to your implementation plan, that you can file for an extension up to three times.
Okay. I, I've, I've made my point, I think. I, I'd like to see us try to get that done. I mean, that was the concept and the contemplation in asking for it. It would seem somewhat of unfortunate if we went through all of that and then said, well, gee, you know, can't do it anyway.
So if I might, thank you, Cory. Perhaps a placeholder article is warranted if we feel that strongly, and we do, we took a vote last evening, in advance of not hearing about a grant by, when, March 15th, when we got to close the warrant? Or, so, so I think, I think we should, we should have that as an agenda item, and one soon, and contemplate that, because I think that's, that's a Plan B, that's a fallback. If this is something we believe in, and I think it is, then, you know, if we don't get the grant and we still want this program, I think we bake it into the budget. I don't know, I don't know what else we do. And then I did have one question for Leah. Leah, is there any, are there any programs that, that you want to- Leah, is there any, are there any programs that, that you want to have that you don't have because of money, other than this wonderful program for Adult Day, should it come to pass?
I, I have to say, not at this time. We are so fortunate with the Friends of the COA. They fund any, I, since I've been here, they've never said no. When we make a proposal every month for the grants that, for the programs that we want in the following months, they are, have always been so generous. And if not, we have the, the, just because I'm up here, Jill, remind me please, the formula grant from the state that funds, that gives us, I think, 14, we're at $14 per individual, over 60 for the town of Chatham. So we have that fund. We are very frugal with that fund, just in case, you know, we use it for programs, if, like program overage if we have to or something. But we have that to fall back on if there is a particular program that we want and are unable to fund.
Well, I think if you read this group, and I'm not going to speak for everybody, but, you know, we're very supportive of the CFL, you know, the COA and-
Yes.
Center for Active Living, thank you very much, but the COA. And if there are programs that, you know, you'd like to run or expand, if there's a luncheon program that's successful, that's very popular, if you need more money, you know, speak out. I'm not speaking for the rest of the board in terms of their assent, but-
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I am one very supportive of the programming there and its expansion and its support, okay?
We really appreciate that. The lunches are the most popular.
I know that, and maybe they should be expanded, is my suggestion.
And we're working, we, we are working towards that for sure. Right now, it's hard to, you know, we haven't, we have the lunches as much as we can right now. We are looking into expanding in which model we want to take on that. And so we, we are looking at that.
But, but to my point, it's not budgeted?
It is not budgeted, correct.
That's my point, okay.
Yes.
I just, a couple of comments on that point. And to correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the expansion of programs is, is limited by the facility. You can't have, okay? So you can only fit so many people in that room with the columns that interfere with your line of sight. And we, we have the engineering report that's underway and it's, when we get that, we'll be in a better position to try to come up with some solutions that will allow us to expand some of these programs. I do want to say something about the adult day, supportive daycare. And I'm somewhat conflicted in saying this because I, I am very supportive of the town trying to do something about that. And I hope we do get the grant monies. But I think if we're going to have an agenda item to discuss it, I'd really like to hear, you know, from our town manager about the implications for staffing additions because we, we have a budget that's been presented that has no staff increases at this point. And it is a five, approximately 5% increase over last year. So I just really want to have a broader discussion of the whole thing. But I would like to have, if we can, an adult daycare. Ideally, if we get the grant, we can get it running. And then we could go to town meeting and say, we've got a successful program, we just need to take it in-house because the grant money is only good for one year. But that's, that's the ideal.
Yeah, yeah. And/or vice versa. So, and then in terms of the lunches, I wasn't necessarily talking about expanding the numbers there, but the number of times we offer it.
Yeah.
Frequency.
I get you.
Very popular.
So Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we'll come back next week if we can for the 27th, if there's any augmentation to the Community Services Center for Active Living budget and then prepare a warrant article. Leah and I just have to get together of, if there needs to be, and what type of funding commitment we still need to give to Orleans, just to get us through the, the gap or the transition, if that's required. So we can, we can follow up on that. And just to remind you, last year, on the day that you transmitted your budget to the Finance Committee, you did add a position to it. So it's something that we, we appreciate and we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions for me before I turn it over to Amy?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Howell, Community Services Deputy Director, Recreation and Beaches.
Amy, is this the first time we've seen you in person?
Possibly. I exist. I will jump right in. So you can see, we don't have much of a difference in our salaries and wages. We actually have a decrease this year of $7,403.77. That is essentially us moving our tennis and swim lesson staff from our temporary line and we're pretty much moving that over to our revolving account. So those positions will be fully funded through those programs themselves. So that is that difference. In our expense line, you see a difference of $14,235. And there's only two lines that that increased, increased on. One is windmill and that is for inflationary costs for maintenance of the windmill every year. That only went up about 1,500. So the bulk of that increase is to our Portageon contract line. And the county bids are, just came in, so we're in the process of reviewing those and we'll have that pretty much in, in the next week. But they did fall within our projected budget, so we are all set for that as well. So our overall budget has actually decreased by 4.49%. Does anyone have any questions on that? Lighthouse Beach, we also have a decrease in the salary. That's really due to just the changing structure of Lighthouse Beach over the last 10 years with the change of the landscape there. You know, it's, it's caused us to staff differently. And then also with the difficulty in recruiting lifeguards. So it's, we've seen the, the consistent decline, so we just wanted to be realistic in our budget this year. And so that is what that decreases. The expense has just remained level funded. So there's a, just a 12.84 decrease just for what we're projecting to staff at Lighthouse Beach this year. So Recreation and Beaches by the numbers, this past year, we had over 50 programs and special events that we offered to the community. We have over 2,700 community members registered in our new recreation software. We had, we hosted over 2,000 programs, meetings and events at the community center, which all funnel through the rec department for scheduling of those rooms and events. And at the beaches, we sold 9,761 daily, weekly and seasonal beach stickers, sold at the gates at Harding's, Cockle and Ridgeville. 95% of those are daily stickers. Just to expand a little bit on our highlights, so we did switch over to MyRec in April from Rec Pro. Primarily, the, the largest change is it allowed us to offer registration online, where before with Rec Pro, 95% of registrations were, had, you had to come into the community center. Now about 95 of our, 95% of our registrations are all online. So it really just provides a much easier system for the community member to kind of see what we have, you know, look for events, programs, you know, any type of news. Our after-school program continues to be extremely successful. You know, they average 269 middle schoolers and 463 elementary schoolers for each month. And 36% of them, of those children do use the Chatham Childcare Voucher Program. We did offer, the rec department itself offered 11 special events this year, highlighted by our, by our first annual Halloween egg hunt. We had over 90 kids with over 4,000 eggs on the community center property. So it was a great success and a fun time for the, the children, the community. Our summer camp program, we average 233 children each week running around the community center. And we have just over 20 seasonal staff for that program alone. And then at our beaches this past year, for the aforementioned beach stickers and lifeguards, we had 32 beach staff at all of our beaches.
Mike, question? Just, do you have any sense, and this is going to be throwing mud at the wall, but do you have any sense of what the relative traffic is in the, the summer, the season versus off-season of your registration software?
So it's our first, it was our first year, so I won't be able to compare really into the, you know, I would, I'd be able to compare, you know, after a year or so, just the data, which this website allows us to really look at the numbers as well and, and give all those different type of numbers. But we do get, I will say, we do get a large number of non-residents. I can say that. Honestly, about 50% of our summer programs that, that, aside from the camp, because our camp pretty much falls with, fills with resident, residents, but our other programs, about 50% of them are non-residents or summer residents.
Okay. But I was also interested in the, the relative size of just the activity, which one would expect is much heavier in the summertime, never mind where it's coming from.
Yeah, the demand is, yeah, the demand is, is much larger. We, you know, see a definite increase in inquiries about different programs and events for, you know, throughout the summer than, than the off-season, for sure.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thanks, Amy. Any insight on how we're going to do with recruiting our lifeguards this next, this next summer? Are you comfortable? Are you positive?
You know, I always say I'm positive every year for lifeguards. But, you know, the exciting thing for us this year is we'll, we'll actually be able to certify guards in-house because of a new hire, Kayden Quinn. He's our new recreation assistant, he's certified. And so to be able to offer that in-house, I, I really think, you know, every year, we've typically lost guards when they've inquired about coming to work for us and we have to send them out to go find a, a different class. And so we lose them because we want to make it as simple as possible to, to get the kids. And so this will enable us to do that. And really just, you know, getting creative, we just signed up for the Cape Tech Job Fair. We're hoping Monomoy does one and just trying to just saturate the market. And, you know, we've increased the salaries just to try and stay competitive with the other towns. So we're kind of doing everything that we can think of to recruit them and, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, with those additional, you know, steps this year, that we'll, we'll get a good recruitment class, so.
My next question was going to be about salaries, but you answered it. But it's one of the only departments we saw with negative numbers in it, so that was, that was refreshing. Not, not that they're egregious increases, but it's great to see negative numbers, so nice job.
Any other questions?
Well, I have capital questions, but we're going to talk about capital.
Okay.
Surely.
And here we are. So we have three capital requests, the Seaside Links, which I know there were some questions on that in the public comment. So the $150,000 is for replacement of the irrigation system. So it's not a design, it's the actual replacement of the whole system that in the last two years, they've had to do emergency repairs that have cost thousands of dollars. The current pump system is over 25 years right now. It is on its last leg. It's, you know, it's a necessity. If we lose the irrigation system for the golf course, the, the cost to replace all the greens, you know, would be obviously much, much more.
So can I?
Yeah.
Over here.
Yeah, sorry.
So, thank you. So just because this was something that Ms. Gibbs had inquired about. So there is a pump station now?
There is a pump station, yes.
So this is a replacing-
This will be replacing it, yeah.
Older, older unit that is on its last legs, basically?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jeff?
I am an advocate for this, this purchase. You know, I do have a conflict here, I do play golf there, as does most of the town. That was tongue-in-cheek as well. It, it is direly needed. It is broken down, it's duct taped and, you know, we have our own well, so it's, failure would not be an option. So anyway, very much in favor of this capital purchase. It'll last a long time. This is the pump, this is the, the pump itself, this is the, you know, heavy-duty pump.
This is the unit off of the Ninth T?
It is indeed.
Or Ninth, Ninth Fairway on the left-hand side?
Yeah, exactly, down in the, down in the hole there.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That's all I got. Thanks, Amy.
Yeah. Okay. Second capital request is community center furniture. You know, unfortunately, the furniture there is, is pretty original to the, to the center itself, so it's seen better days. A lot of them are, are on their last leg. So this is kind of our first step in, in requesting to be able to start to replace, you know, some of the furniture there, you know. You know, as you saw in the numbers, you know, we host over 2,000, you know, events, meetings, programs, so it's used and it's, it's used a lot. And, you know, a lot of them need to be replaced. And so this is, this is kind of our first, our first step in that.
Out of curiosity, is the conference table, the room outside of the fitness area, when you say that things are on their last legs, I think that's on broken legs that are prop, propping it up?
Yes.
So I think that would be, and I don't do that to that list.
Yeah, absolutely. Priority would, would go to those, you know, to the ones that are on their last legs, literally.
Literally, literally.
And the third capital request is for fitness room equipment. You know, every couple of years, we're, we try and replace the equipment, it's very, it's, it's used a lot, as you can see. You know, we have over 400, almost 500 memberships, you know, that use that room yearly. The cardio equipment is obviously, I would probably say, used the most. And some of the pieces of equipment have not been replaced in the last eight or nine years. The last piece of equipment that we bought cardio-wise, which is with this one, what we'd be looking to place, was four years ago for one of the treadmills. So they're starting to, again, you know, they're, they're falling out of warranty and starting to cost more to repair every year than it would be to replace it. And also, obviously, with all the memberships, we feel that we want to give them good equipment as well, since it is, it is popular and it is used.
Questions, comments? Random question, the variety of equipment, current feelings from the, from those who use it? We have a good balance?
I think so. Our, our plan is, because, you know, we have been looking at it, is we're going to be sending out a survey in the next month because we want to see what, what they want and what they use. So that survey's going to be going out so that we can kind of create a five to seven year plan, moving forward with what type of equipment as we replace it, what people want, what's not used. Let's replace it with something that is used, so. So, because we have been getting, you know, suggestions, so we just want to see what everyone kind of is liking and not liking in there.
Perfect. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, great job.
And then we do have a CPC request on here, which is the Chatham Community Center Little League, and it's just to rehabilitate the Little League field. The bulk of the $136,000 ask is replacement of the fence, which again, is on its last leg and in disrepair. So that is probably about 80% of that budget will go towards replacing the fencing all along the Little League field. We'll also replace the shed that is rotting and we will add new bleachers on both sides for spectators, both sides of fields, and new team benches and some new infield material as well.
Desperately needed, yes, that's, yes. Very supportive of this.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've had all the presentations tonight. Anything else as far as this agenda goes that you need from us tonight, or?
Just one more. Yeah. Here's going to go with the general government.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I'm going to be going over general government and other for FY '25. So general government consists of 6% of the overall budget. I'll also be going over employee benefits, which is 11% of the budget, undistributed insurance and reserve fund, which is 2% of the budget, and debt service, which is 14%. the budget, and debt service, which is 14%. General government is, again, 6% of the operating budget and consists of 10 departments, four other, and two committees. Select Board, Town Manager, Human Resources, Accounting, Assessing, Treasure Collector, IT, which I already went over, Town Clerk, Elections, and Sticker Permit Office, which is under general government, but it's, how do I say this?
Supervised by?
Yeah, supervised by the natural resources. So, thank you. Other departments include Town Moderator, Legal, Audit, Parking Clerk, Summer Residence Advisory Committee, and the Finance Committee. The general government budget for 2025 is 3.4 million, up 235 from 2024. Personnel increases are 82,000, and operational expenses increases are 152. Sorry. These are all the salary increases for each department. Town Manager's Department at 23.6, Human Resources at 18.8, Accounting Division is actually negative due to the retirement in the office. Assessing Division is up 10.8, Treasure Collector 8.2, IT, you just saw that one, 19.5, and Town Clerk at 8.8, amounting to $82,627. These are all salary increases due to contractual increases, step increases, and longevity. These are the increases by department. Select Board 700, Town Manager 16,800, Human Resources 6,050, Accounting 500, Legal 10,000, Assessing 13, IT, which we already went over, 60,250, Elections 45,250, amounting to 152. And I'll get into the details.
I mean, it's not a big piece of it, but I'm curious, why, do we have some anticipated legal expense that explains the increase in legal or just?
Yeah, we'll get to there.
Okay.
So the Select Board budget increased $700, and this was for advertising costs. The expenses in FY23 were actually $1,188, with only a line budget of $300. So that's why the increase is for that. The Town Manager's budget, their operational budget is 622,490. Their increases for, their expenses are $16,800. Printing increased 5,000 because of printing costs have increased to the size, due to the size of mailing requirements for the warrants that we do and the need to outsource special town meeting warrants. Inflation has also affected paper, ink, and prices at the printers. Postage increased $9,500 due to the price increase of stamps and vote by, my, I'm sorry, vote-by-mail elections in 2025. Office supplies increased $1,000 due to price increase of supplies. The supplies expenses in FY23 were $13,587, with only a budget of $9,000. Meetings, dues, and travels increased by $1,500 due to price increases. This line was overspent as well in FY23, with expenses of $6,197, with only a budget of $4,450. The other charges and expenses has decreased by 250. They currently have a budget of $500 in that line, and they only spent $310. So. Do you have any questions so far? Okay. Human resource budget is $224,079. Their increase is amount to $6,050. $750 for purchase of services. And this is, this line is for employee engagement. So that's what that increase is for. Contracted services line increased $500. There was previously no budget in this line, but they expended $380 in FY23. And this is for custom drug testing cafeteria plan advisors that we use. Physical exams and new hire testing increased $2,000. The cost of physical exams have increased over time in FY23. And now this is for, I'm just going to say this because Finance Committee didn't realize this, the physical exams and new hires are for the entire town. So any new hires or any, you know, exams that they need for existing employees, they all get paid for through the HR department. So the expenses in FY23 were $9,634, with a budget of $6,000. Boots have increased $2,550. Again, this is for, not necessarily for the HR department, but this is, this is for the boots for the people in the CBA contract. The cost of boots are $150, and there's 37 employees, which amounts to $5,550. Professional consulting increased $2,000 for recruitment consultants as needed. There is an offset from the advertising line that they did not need. So we kind of just moved the money from advertising into professional consulting instead. Any questions?
We have Megan Downey, our HR Director, here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Accounting Division is, the budget is $317,332, with increases of $500. And this is for continuing education. There's three of us in the office, and I just want to make sure that we all, we all have, you know, training that we need and continuing education. The legal budget, this is where you had a question on, the budget is $235,000, and the increase is 10,000 to Labor Counsel. So Labor Counsel line has increased by 10,000 due to the increases seen in this line in '23. They had expenses in, that amounted to $50,794. And in FY22, they had expenses of $82,706. So this is just an increase to kind of line up with some of the expenses that we've been seeing over the past years.
Does that, do you have any sense of how that breaks down between advisory and what I'll call dispute resolution or negotiation, mediation, that sort of thing?
I think Jill can speak more to this.
Yes, to all of the above. So we, all of our collective bargaining agreements are open, and we do use Labor Counsel for a couple of the negotiation sessions. Sometimes negotiations go longer than six months or so, and so we've brought Labor Counsel in. Labor Counsel's also assisted in any investigations that we've had to do, which are very few. And if there's any type of grievance disputes or settlements, it's something that they would assist on. So their, their total budget out of the entire, just don't have me, out of the entire counsel, legal counsel budget is $55,000.
Thank you.
Elections, their budget is $94,885. They have $45,250 of increases. And all of this is due to the elections in FY25. They have a presidential primary and a state election and additional costs for their early voting staff. So they increased their purchases of services for that reason. They increased their contracted service cleaning line, that's what they call it, their cleaning line, by $100 due to their janitor's prices of increases for them. The police details have increased $7,500. And again, that's for, with all the elections, they need to make sure that they have police presence at all the locations.
Sorry, Carrie, the "they" that you're referring to as the clerk?
Yes, sorry, the clerk. Yes, yes. This is under them. Yep. Printing, $12,500. This is additional cost for the elections in 2025. And also additional costs for their voting machine coding and for elections and central tabulation and additional memory card for all events at the ballot. And then other charges and, sorry, expenses, I put down elections, $1,050. This is for additional meals for the election workers. You won't see, you'll see that coming off in the next year, in 2026. It's just a one-time increase in 2025. The assessing division budget is at $347,295, increases of $13,000. The revaluation increased $12,600. And this is for a three-year contract that they have. They do revaluation every five years. But every year, this company does a market analysis. And then they have increased costs of in continuing education for $200 and meetings, dues, and travel. And this is just a 5% increase so they can maintain their licenses and go to continuing education classes. The Treasure Collector Division had no increases, and the Town Clerk had no increases to their budget. And the other following departments, well, other than their salaries, but expense-wise, they didn't have any increases. The following departments are level-funded for 2025: Town Moderator, Finance Committee, Audit, Summer Resident Advisory Committee, and Parking Clerk.
Just a quick comment, that audit is very reasonable for what we get, and they haven't gone up. So I think that's great.
Yeah, I think, I think either, I think this year is the last year for our auditors.
Yes.
2025, that is. Okay. So these are some other departments that haven't gone over yet. Let's see. So the assessment for the Veterans Services has increased 9.7% over FY24. And this is as the assessment I got from, and have received from Barnstable County. So it's a county-wide assessment, and they send out the assessments to all the towns. So it was $64,136 for the assessment, and the benefits was level-funded at $35,000. The public ceremonies line, there was an increase of $3,190 over 2024. And this is in order to cover additional costs for bands, bathrooms, floats, et cetera. They have seen an increase in costs. And then we have Chatham Band, which was level-funded, and the River Museum was actually level-funded as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, Carrie, and how long has the band, band been at $7,500? It's, it's been at that level for 10 years or whatever. And I, I think it's time we up that a little bit, only because they're such an asset. They, they drive such activity, wonderful economic activity in this town. I think we can be, I'd like to be more supportive, at least as a, as a Select Board member. I bumped that up 2,500 bucks to 10,000 or so. I just think, we're not doing right by them. They really are, they don't ask anything. And they're a wonderful asset.
The only expense I ever remember is the uniforms, because they had the old woolen uniforms that they would wear in the summer, and I think they're cotton now, I think. Do they, do the individual band members get a stipend?
No.
Unreal.
No.
Yeah, I would support your-
No, it's all voluntary. And you know what? We haven't done anything for them in a long, long time.
And they, they perform whenever they're asked.
It's unbelievable.
I, I would support that increase. I did want to ask, is the Independence Day Parade funded out of the public ceremonies budget in part? Is that where that's coming?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I only ask because we also, we have a public ceremonies committee, which handles just the Memorial and Veterans Day. And then we have a separate committee called the Independence Day Parade Committee. So I was wondering. So it does come under that? Okay.
So again, I'd like to, I'd like to bump the band up to 10,000.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you. Employee benefits budgeted at $6,260,194 for 2025. This is an increase of $451.96, I mean, sorry, $96 compared to 2024. Let's see. The police and fire injury line increased $2,250. This is a 10% increase to that line. The retirement assessment is at $2,745,182, an increase of 163,820. We just received that assessment a couple weeks ago. And the health insurance line is a 10% increase, and that's at $3,135,262. Even though we received from Cape Cod Municipal Health Group a 8%, we're comfortable with a 10% increase due to some variables we're still working through. And we also have some open positions that have not been filled yet.
Well, those are the biggest numbers we've seen.
Yeah, those are going to be, yeah, those are probably going to be the biggest numbers and the biggest increases.
Carrie, just walk us through a little bit, for the public, the retirement assessment at 2.7, and then health insurance.
So the retirement assessment is based on employees' salaries. So the town pays a portion of everybody's pension into Barnstable County. If you pay, if you pay once a year on July 1st, you get a discount, and that's the discounted price. If you pay twice a year, you actually end up paying more. Some towns can only afford to pay twice a year, but, so that's what that is. So like, the employee pays a portion and the town pays a portion. It's kind of almost like, you understand that, right?
And these are actual cash expenses?
What, I said it's-
These are actual cash expenses paid?
Correct. Yes. Yep.
Premiums. Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. So, health insurance up 10%, even though it's an 8% increase, but we think we're going to have more employees, et cetera. So it's going to go up to 10%.
Yep.
Okay. Unreal. So, and our employees contribute what, Jill?
So for retirement, they contribute between 11 and 13% of their salary. We don't contribute to Social Security. And then for health insurance, depending on when someone was hired, if they are hired before 2013, they contribute 35%. So the town is 65%. And then, let's say before, before 2013, it's 70-30 split. After 2013, it's 65-35. And then what we budgeted for every year is that we, we don't know what changes or family events that would happen in open enrollment. So someone might be on a, on a single or two-person plan, and they have a family, they're, they're moved to a family plan.
What's the retirement assessment again?
Oh, let me go back.
The percentage for the employee.
The employees pay 11% to 13% depending on their salary.
When they were hired.
Yeah.
So just, the, how does this budget relate to any future possible, what I'll call, contract changes?
So this budget would not reflect that. It's, it would basically be a separate warrant article. And we do have an executive session tonight, but the collective bargaining agreement's the first year. The fiscal impact would be in a separate warrant article.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The next one is insurance, undistributed insurance. This budget for 2025 is $977,876, an increase of $127,648, with a 13% increase overall. I was told by the insurance company to expect a 10% to 15% increase on insurance. So we have watercraft insurance, vehicle insurance, cybersecurity data insurance, flood insurance, property liability- flood insurance, property liability insurance, and excess liability insurance.
Do we have DNO policy that covers the town leadership or an errors and emissions policy?
It's public officials liability policy, and we do have that.
Okay, because that's not listed there.
It might be included under one. I don't know.
So you asked about DNO? Yeah, yeah, I didn't hear the question.
Yeah, that's what it was. I mean, I know there are limitations in terms of how much a plaintiff can get under the, under chapter 258. But most cities and towns do have some sort of DNO policy or errors and emissions. And I guess it's called municipal liability or public liability.
Yes, to an extent, but if there's an ethics ruling against a town official, that's not covered under the insurance or personally responsible for that. And that's why we do the ethics training and the annual ethics update for town officials and employees.
Good point, good point. So I'm all too familiar with the insurance game, if you will, premiums. But do we ever make, do we have claims outstanding, unsettled claims, or do we ever make a claim here in town?
If there was, it's usually closed out in, within that year. So if there, I mean-
You mean under DNO?
You mean under DNO?
No, I mean under any one of those policies.
Yes, like, remember when we had at 549, the town offices, we had the wire, I mean, that was two years ago. That was, we filed with our insurer as well as ever source, but our, we have, our deductibles are pretty high. And so in order to keep our premiums down, so, you know, there's that offset.
A question my board asked me is, when was the last time we put it all at a bid?
I think we did that, Carrie wasn't here, but I think it was two or three years ago.
So I was actually, when I first started, Maya had actually said they wanted to work with us on our insurance. So I don't know if, it's something to look at.
It is. It's just something to keep in the, through the windshield, just looking ahead. Just in the back, you know, just-
Absolutely.
Every once in a while, you gotta test the market.
Yep, I agree. The next line is the reserve fund for 2025. This is $100,000 and is level funded for 2025. This is for the unforeseen, unexpected costs that occur.
That never happens.
Actually, it happened. So those type of requests will go to, I believe, the select board and the finance committee for approval. And I believe we expended the fund last year of 100,000. So we don't typically raise it. It's always level funded at 100,000, and anything that's not used goes into free cash.
How long has it been, that 100,000?
It's probably been, certainly before I got here, and even in my other towns, it was never more than 100,000. It's, it's really meant to be limited and for like emergencies. Other than that, we would go to town meeting for those type of larger emergency.
The debt service for 2025 is projected at $7,559,711. Principal is $5,882, I'm sorry, $603. Interest is $1,527,108, and short-term interest at 150,000.
Jeff, have a question?
Any refinancing, refundings in our future?
We just got something from the Clean Water Trust for a refund, I believe.
Or any debt to refinance? I know the rates are kind of high, so it's probably not a great time, but any thoughts?
I haven't looked into that yet. Most of our stuff that's been coming through is for Clean Water Trust, which is 0% interest anyway, so.
We refunded debt, I believe it was three years ago. So same duration, so no additional duration, but a better interest rate. So I think it was about three or four years ago.
That was good timing.
Yeah, I think the interest rates are starting to come down a little bit, but, yeah. This is just a graph of where we are in our debt. As you can see, this is what we have on the books as of right now. You can see next year in 2026, if we don't borrow, then it's going to go down. But as we keep borrowing for projects, it's going to keep going up.
Is that just authorized?
That is.
Authorized, or is it just expended or is it authorized, including non-expended?
What has been, well, it's not authorized and issued, so we still have stuff that's unissued. But yeah, it's just basically what's been expended.
So issued?
Yeah, yeah, issued debt. Yeah, outstanding. That's a better way to put it, outstanding debt.
Do we have, because this question came up recently, do we have the number of total authorized? Or is that shown in one of your charts?
I have a chart. I actually, I was gonna, I have a whole like pamphlet thing to put together for you guys, but I was going to get into that more closer when you guys start going over the articles and stuff, so I will provide that too.
It would be useful to have that when we start looking at, I know we've got a huge article tonight.
So I can send it to you, go ahead.
I was going to say, so you're updating the presentation that our previous finance director, Alex, had done back in May with updated figures?
Yeah, it's updated, yep.
Do I understand correctly, I think I do, but I'd like you to confirm that your policy, our policy, is to level fund principal over the life of the debt?
Level fund?
In other words, if it's a 20-year piece of paper, you do 1/20th of the principal every year?
Usually, yes, that's, yeah, that's usually how it goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is a graph. This is from the same slide that you just saw previously, but this is on a graph instead. And then I have another slide. This is actually a projection. This one kind of shows all of our debt that we've approved is in the blue, everything that's existing. And then we have the waterfront infrastructure. We have the next phases of the wastewater up on the gray. And then we have on top up there, that purple checker color right there, that is the second waterfront, two, I guess we'll call it, that's if that gets passed. I just wanted to show this to you just in case, you know, any of these things get passed, what the graph would kind of look like. Again, I have a whole presentation on the debt, but I haven't, I wanted to wait until this was kind of gone through. The black one for the transfer station, that's actually the first one that you've already approved, but we haven't borrowed for yet. And then transfer station number two is the one that's on the table for FY '25, for the 2 million. That's up there.
So this is everything authorized and anticipated if town meeting approves articles that are going in that?
Including the gray, that's the wastewater next phases that haven't all gone through yet. So you haven't approved all that. It's just, in case you ever do. And that's it. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Nope, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One real quick, the transfer station, the two tranches are five and two, 5 million and 2 million, roughly?
Oh God, I wish I had my paper in front of me. Yeah, roughly. I think it was like, wasn't it like 7 million that they got approved?
Together.
Together.
Oh, together.
Yeah, the first tranche was five, which we've already approved.
You're right, yeah.
And the two is what we're asking for this year.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. What would you like to go over next? Do you want me to?
So are we, I think we're at the draft warrant articles.
Okay.
Unless you had any changes you wanted to talk about for the FY '24, I'm sorry, FY '25 budget.
Well, I am presenting the changes for next week, right, on the 27th. So the changes so far have been to the school department. So those have actually gone down a little bit. And then the retirement, I just went over that. That's an updated figure. The railroad, I decreased that. I originally had that at 5,000. I decreased that to 2 and level funded that. And then obviously, if you want to increase the Chatham Band, that will be another increase, but we don't have too many, yeah, so.
Dive into the draft warrant articles then?
Yes, so the first one we had on our list was the waterfront bond article reauthorization.
Perfect.
Do you want to go over the waterfront bond?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Not advancing for me. There we go, sorry. And you wanted waterfront bond before dredging?
Yes, please.
Very good, we can do that. So this was our previous waterfront bond. It was intended for fiscal years 2018 through 2022. We're now, you know, planning for fiscal year '25. This was a $11.35 million project. And while I wasn't here, a lot of good work got done. So I'm just going to mention a few of the things that were accomplished with the previous waterfront infrastructure article. So at the fish pier, we have a new deck and stairs. We have the new sidewalk, bulkhead along the south jog. The increase in bulkhead size makes things a little bit more resilient for sea level rise and storms. We also have a retaining wall and sidewalk around the lower end of the parking lot. And, I mean, I don't want to read everything here to you. I think you have a better feeling for what got accomplished at the fish pier than I do. But there still is at least one more aspect of the fish pier to complete, and that's the cantilevered pedestrian walkway along the south side of the south jog that got held off mostly for permitting so we could finish off the rest of the project. But now it's time to begin that permitting process so we can really get those Jersey barriers out of there and finish the project off. Yes?
We're all very confused by the cantilevered pedestrian walkway. I'm not recalling what that design looked like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem at all. So the very, you know, southern side of the fish pier itself, this would extend from that concrete platform and cantilever off, which means it just kind of overhangs it. There would be a support struts coming out, and then, you know, there wouldn't be pilings south of that. It would be a walkway to allow you to access the other part of the fish pier.
Does it go around the parking lot and then north along the south jog? Is that where it goes? Is that where it goes? It goes along that south jog?
So, yeah, here's our south jog.
Yeah.
And I think you can see the Jersey barriers right there. It would be over the sand in that area. So you'd be going outside of what's existing right now.
And where's it, where's it headed? To the dock?
I believe it just goes to the dock, right?
I'll try to fill it in.
Does it get back to the observation deck at all, or is it?
No, no.
Okay.
One of the goals that obviously was accomplished during the existing project was to improve pedestrian access and safety for accessing the various components of the fish pier. One of the important components of that was the inclusion of the pedestrian sidewalk walkway around the perimeter of the parking lot. Unfortunately, the design, I shouldn't say unfortunately, the design included that to then have the, quote, "cantilevered walkway" provide that from the sidewalk over to behind the side of the south jog to the platform to access the public pier. There is a retaining wall, a concrete retaining wall, that was to separate the conduct construction, or not the construction, the commercial activity that works on the south jog from the walkway on the other side. That required a permitting change that would not have allowed us to complete that project in that timeframe when we did it, because it was higher than the percentage we were allowed to do within existing modifications of the existing permits. So we said, let's defer that, let's do this work while we had the opportunity, and go back, get the permits, and then come forward, you know, with the final cantilevered walkway to, as Greg mentioned, those Jersey barriers were temporary to provide a quasi-safe public walkway. So, if that clarified.
Don't go far. So yeah, that's our walkway. The trap dock was completed in 2023, along with an ice machine and cooler box. And 90 Bridge, as of now, we have our permits in place. The dredging has been completed. I'm sorry, the dredging in the area of the upweller has been completed. There still will be a little bit of additional dredging right along the side of where the bulkhead is to be installed. And, I'm sorry, I can't see again. So one thing we did with 90 Bridge is we broke it into phases. Instead of doing it all at once, there were a few different reasons for this, but it allows us to move the project forward. This next phase after the dredging would be the construction of the bulkhead. And this would be undertaken using, planned to be undertaken, using some funds from the Wolf. So we have gone before three of the four committees and gotten positive responses. The other committee just hasn't met yet. That was to happen next week. So there is, you know, fairly good consensus, and we hope there'll be complete consensus about using the Wolf for some of this. It would be an $800,000 request from there. And then this would be using the Seaport Economic Council's $1 million grant. One of the aspects for doing this in phases is using up these funds now could allow us to use and apply for additional grants in a subsequent fiscal year, in addition to be able to move forward and utilize the last of the remaining existing waterfront bonds. And I'll kind of talk through what those numbers are in another couple of slides. After we get the bulkhead finished, the next phase would be construction of the pile-supported pier and float system. And then after that, we have kind of a final phase, which is the returning and repurposing of the Coast Guard building. And then that would be turned into an upwelling facility for shellfish propagation. So, I mean, you have heard this before, but this is a very multi-use facility, incorporating, you know, shellfish, recreational, commercial, and public access, which is trying to be preserved through the town. There's other things that were on the original warrant article, previous bond that got delayed for various other projects. Ryder's Cove is still on the list for a bulkhead and ramp replacement, associated other improvements, restrooms, et cetera. And so with a new waterfront bond article, we could move forward with this project also. We, yes?
Have we had a look at the design? We've had a look at the design for Ryder's Cove for some time on the books, but Ted, maybe this is a question for you. There's a lot of flooding up in there now on big tides. I mean, it goes right into the roadway. Are we going to have to look at a redesign for that, for that system?
We, that's a problem everywhere. We've known about flooding at Ryder's Cove, obviously, for years. It's an issue now. It's going to be, continue to be an issue. It's problematic, given just the geometry, the geography of the site. I mean, we could raise bulkheads, but it's still going to get around. It comes through the marina. You know, raising the land itself, then you make a plateau, and it just doesn't work. So the scheme that we've been following in a lot of these situations, unlike the fish pier, where we actually were able to raise something and not change, you know, water flow, if you will, is to, as best we can, let the water come in, let the- is to, as best we can, let the water come in, let the water go out and still maintain the systems. Keep the utilities up as high as we can, make the floats so that when the water goes up, the floats, as they did a few years ago during the 2018 storms, the floats went up and over the pilings and then started floating down the harbor. So we try to, we will be doing and, and the designs are incorporating as much of that resiliency components in the designs of, of that kind of stuff. Trying to keep the water out and a lot of it, it's not just us. It's all the coastal communities. It's, it's almost impossible in some cases. So.
Thank you.
Yep. And, and certainly, you know, with regard to storms coming in, they go out again. But we'll also be assessing all waterfront projects for potential sea level rise impacts that the water may not be going out or flooding higher. We also have reconstruction of the Little Mill Pond Pier and the Barn Hill Landing, assessing the bulkhead reconstruction and over replacement. Over on the right, you can see the revetment that, you know, it has been on the books to examine that to see if we could replace with a bulkhead to make it more effectively used. But that has kind of, well, actually, the, the next couple of slides will talk about the staging of this that we really need to get through some of the earlier things before we get to this. But we wanted to include it in the waterfront bond, most, mostly for transparency that we're not, you know, just going one year and talking about a project. But we have a list of additional projects and we want really the, the select board in the town to understand what our plans are moving into the future and give opportunities for folks to weigh in. So here's kind of the, the meat of the slides, what we would propose going forward. So the upper cells talk about 90 bridge. So just using the existing bond, we would finish the bulkhead project. And that's with the million dollar Seaport grant and the 800,000 from the Wolf if it gets approved. And then our next phase is the piers and floats. And this would expand the last of the existing waterfront bond. And then we would need additional funding from potentially a 2025 request from the Wolf, although that hasn't been, you know, decided yet. But would also need money from another source. So this would be the start of a new waterfront bond or replenishment of the old waterfront bond, however we do it logistically. And then for the final stage, it would be about 2.6 million for that refitting the Coast Guard boathouse into an upwelling facility. And we do have about 700 K from a CPC grant. We would be examining other opportunities to find more grants during this time. But this is our best guess at these numbers. I don't want people to think that we can decide how much it costs. These are estimates. When we actually get the bids back, it could be more. Hopefully it'll be less, but that has not been our experience in the last several years. Prices have gone significantly up. That's one of the reasons why the old bond was expended perhaps more quickly than was anticipated. Increased costs and also taking advantage of the ability to spend money wisely. If a, you know, condition is found on site that needs to be addressed, whether it's, you know, something that was unexpected or an opportunity to save money in the future, that money could be expended using these funds. Additionally, when we're talking about some of these projects, like the fish pier walkway, we have some estimates for them. But we are trying to get them reduced by looking at different materials, potentially re-engineering for different methods. 700,000 is a lot for a cantilevered walkway. But we're, you know, budgeting for what is proposed by our design engineers. But we're always looking for ways to, you know, reduce the cost of the town while still getting the benefit. The Little Mill Pond Pier would be about 700 K. And then when we get into subsequent years, fiscal year 26 or beyond, we'd be looking to do Ryder's Cove and Barn Hill Landing. And by then there'd be some more, you know, space and capacity that's been rebuilt in the Wolf funds that could be used to offset some of these also. So just talk.
Greg, just before you move on, I see Mr. Dykens has his calculator out, so.
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to go back to this slide afterwards, too.
Greg, thank you, just if I might, on the 90 bridge. So we have 2.3 million bucks left to, to finish, you know, the bulkhead and piers and floats. And then you're assuming a new bond, it would be 4.4 and a half million dollars of new money that would be dedicated to 90 bridge, which would be offset by 1.6 million in future Wolf funds, if you will. I'm just, I'm just taking that 1.7 has already been allocated. Or do I add up all the 1.7 plus the 1.6? So we'd actually have, you know, 3.2 there? Or 3.3, if you will, to go against the 4.2, 4.5? I'm just trying to figure out what's the net? If, if you make the assumption that 800 comes from the Wolf in 24 and 25, what's the net-net that we'd have to come up with in additional money?
For the?
The 1.9 and the 2.6? Is that what it is?
Yes, that would, that would just be coming out of a potential new waterfront bond. That middle column was just the waterfront bond.
Yeah, I know. We have, yeah, so we have, but we have four and a half of new money. And then you're, you're assuming maybe another 800 in 24 and 25 from the Wolf? Or, or that, that four and a half and the new bond is including all those monies to the right?
Yes, this is assuming all the monies on the right
Okay.
would be approved.
Okay, so, so.
I'm going to interrupt, forgive me, but I think you guys are, there's a little dramatic irony here. I think you're asking is the four and a half offset by the million six
Correct.
from the Wolf? And I think you're saying it's four and a half plus the 1.6.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying, yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
The middle column is expected to be expended. And if we don't get the stuff in the right column, then we would need more from the waterfront bond.
But we already have the million in the Seaport grant and the 700 K CPC. We already have that.
Yes.
So the new money over, over and above the new bond we'd be looking for is 1.6, but that's already included and it's offset in the four and a half. Okay. I just, I'm looking for the overall cost of this project and what new money we gotta, we gotta, we gotta take out. That's what I'm looking for.
And two for clarification, we would be eligible for another waterfront bond the upcoming year, correct? Not on this project or probably another project?
You mean the, the grant, the Seaport grant?
Oh, yes.
The Seaport Economic Grant, yes.
Yeah, we, we don't anticipate coming for with another bond in subsequent years.
Another bond, that's a grant, that's a.
The Seaport Grant, we, we could potentially apply again and it is our plan to apply again. We, we didn't list it on here. But on the next slide, when I talk about, you know, additional ways of us trying to defray these costs, Seaport Economic Council grant is definitely on there again. It had the $1 million cap for last fiscal year. We're hoping to be able to use it again for this.
I think the town has been extremely lucky and, you know, and fortunate to have received the funds we've had from the Seaport Economic Council in, in the last couple of years, so for sure.
Luck and, and, you know, skill with identifying and writing the grants. Our coastal resource director has done an excellent job of finding those and the dredging grants, too. So the next article is the warrant. And one of the rationales for, you know, having funds in the town ready to go for these projects is to be able to match grant funds. So we did use grant-funded dredge money for 90 bridge so far. And we would hope to be able to, you know, use town funds as match for additional grant opportunities.
Mike, a question?
Yeah, just, are, are we, are you saying that once you've expended the 500 in the existing bond column, the 2.3, thank you, that we're done with the piers and, the bulkhead and the piers and floats?
So I, I probably could have revised this a little nicer. The 500 and the 1.8 is what's left of the existing bond. But it takes the 1.8 and the 1.9 to finish the piers and floats.
That was, that was my question. You answered it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say back in 2017, when the 11.3 was sent to town meeting, I think it was just Jeff and Cory and myself. I don't think you were on the board at that point, were you? When we did it?
No, 2018.
Yeah. It was explicitly understood that any individual project that was going to be charged against the bond would come back to the select board for an approval. And I just want to make sure that's still the understanding if this particular bond issue, is that correct?
Sorry, Jill.
Yes, it is. We've, every previous phase of the 90 Bridge Street project, we've come to the select board. And the Fish Pier project, you had updates while it was going on. So it's basically the 90 Bridge Street project that's, that needs the additional funding to get it to completion.
And that additional funding is four and a half million? What is?
It's looking like it is.
For just 90 bridge, yes.
Right. So it's another four and a half million dollars over the 2.3 we have currently.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So a couple of other comments, if I might, Cory, on the, the Little Mill Pond Pier. That seems like a lot of money, too, just, just saying. And the Fish Pier Walkway, I agree with you, that does seem like a lot of money. 700 K seems like a lot of money for a cantilevered walkway, whatever cantilevered means. And then the, the last time, I haven't been to Mill Pond Pier in a while, but the last time I was there, it seemed like it was in pretty good shape. So I'm just saying. And if I had to vote, if I had to prioritize, I would prioritize Ryder's Cove big time over anything else. Big time. It's, the pilings there, the, it's, it's, it's not in great shape. Needs, it needs a new ramp. And it's very active. It's very active commercially and by both residents and non-residents. Big bass fishing, unloading tuna, mussels, shellfish, all sorts, a lot of action. A lot of town action there. Guys haul out there, they work on their boats there. It's a very, very active landing, extremely popular.
So one of the aspects with that, and I can certainly have Ted speak to any of the landings and conditions. But with, with Ryder's Cove, we want to be especially careful not to impact the busy season with any construction. So that's one reason it might be a little bit later on this schedule than some of the others. It's just to make absolute sure, you know, everything is completely lined up to go as fast as we can when it's off-season.
Excellent point. Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, as I understand it, and this kind of dovetails with that understanding that, that Dean just articulated, or somebody just articulated, that each project comes back for approval. If we approve the bond and shareholder, I mean, sorry, town meeting approves the, the bond, we don't start paying until the project is approved and the fund, and, and, and we issue debt to pay for the specific project. So we would still have another shot at the Fish Pier Walkway, for example, or the Little Mill Pond Pier before we're really actually spending any money in the way of interest and principal on, on a bond issuance. Is that an accurate understanding?
Correct. So that, once the invoices come in, that's when we start, you know, accruing our debt.
Okay.
I just want to respond to the Little Mill because if you were to just walk out on it, it doesn't look too bad. I didn't even realize this until I looked into the, the background, if you will. That facility was one of the three that was a CFI Coastal Facilities Improvement Program grant that we got back in the eighties. It was Barn Hill, Ryder's Cove, Little Mill Pond, and I think another one that's lost me, Crow's Pond. The work done back in the eighties was only replacing the decking. The piles are actually from the thirties. And they're, some of them are hollow. So it's still sound, so to speak, but it is need of complete replacement. So that's one reason the, the number is high. It's a complete pull all the old piles out that are creosote and fully replace what basically is there, basically the same footprint. So that's why.
That, that's very helpful, Ted, because again, I walked on, it looked pretty good, but okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Yep.
So I, I only have one slide after this that talks about, you know, where else we can try to find money. And I'm happy to go back to this one after if there's more questions or stay here now.
We can move forward? Move forward.
Very good. So I, I, I think most people in this room probably know what monies fund the Wolf. But just for folks at home, it's the waterways user fee, fish pier docking permits, the fish pier leases and fuel revenues. And that's approximately $250,000 a year going into the Wolf. So that's, you know, as part of our spending plan, we're looking at building up over ti- it's built up over time. So we want to be able to use it. There is allowance to use up to $1 million per year. So it's not like we're going to use the entire Wolf this year because there's much more than a million. I believe it's 1.8 million, give or take. But it will be hopefully replenished back to the levels that can be used for the subsequent projects. I realize that's still, you know, resident, taxpayer of Chatham money. So it's, it's, it's still coming from Chatham. Some of the other sources we're looking at are additional Seaport Economic Council grants, the Salson Kennedy to support agriculture and other ways to try to get that upweller facility in place and cheaper. Municipal Americans with disability, this is going to be hopefully a very accessible structure for 90 bridge. So we're looking for ways to offset some of those costs. And, you know, we monitor federal and state opportunities as much as possible. And, you know, it is our intention to reduce any of these costs as much as we can. Like you said, it, it's not debt until it gets spent. It's always going to cost money to live on the coastline. All of our waterfront infrastructure does need maintenance. But, you know, we're hoping to have this last as long as we can. And I guess really just the, the last point again is we don't truly know what these things cost until we get our bids back.
Any more infrastructure money sloshing around, ARPA? Anybody?
Yeah, not at this time. The, the ARPA and other funds have been mostly for like wastewater and debt reduction. But, you know, just we're, I, I know especially Greg and I are monitoring every grant there is out there for waterfront infrastructure. And I, and I think the, the ADA grant provides another opportunity for us to.
I, I do still have dredging after this, but if there's anything else on the waterfront?
Question? Nope, from that. Let's go to dredging.
Slide back up here. So this one just has one slide. This is one that you've seen many times before. This is the coastal resources, typically $300,000 a year. But we took the 100,000 out of capital and put it all onto this warrant article. So this will be a $400,000 ask for this particular article. And dredging is key to waterfront recreation in Chatham, especially our fishing fleet. When we're talking about this fund, it's not only, you know, Chatham's money being spent. This is also Chatham's money being leveraged that we can get state dredging grants. I believe it was a 50-50 match on a lot of the 90 bridge work. So we were able to get twice as much done with Chatham's money. There are some uncertainties regarding the dredging, specifically how the sand is moving. We have inlets forming in Chatham, a very dynamic area. And whether the Corps of Engineers is going to be doing maintenance dredging of Stage Harbor and Lydia's Cove, all these things are question marks. We've budgeted kind of status quo going into the future. It may not be enough to cover in future years. I guess this is just kind of a warning that, you know, price of dredging is going up. And, and literally the price of dredging is going up. I think Ted just got a, an email today talking about how the Barnstable County dredge rates have increased significantly, ballpark 30 to 40%. So we, we can talk more about that at a later time. But, you know, this is something that I think is key to Chatham and it's going to get more expensive, sadly.
Did we have 500 last year and 400 this year or are we keeping the same 400?
It's the same 400. It's just a different presentation. So we used to have 100 in the capital, five-year capital plan that was funded by free cash. And then the 300 as a separate warrant article funded by the tax rate this year would be 400 funded in full by the tax rate.
Got it. Thanks, Jill.
And if there's any questions?
No. Step back and go back to the waterfront bond articles. If there's any action we want to entertain tonight? Any questions, any thoughts?
Well, I think the question is so that we can proceed with the budget and all the financial stuff in time for time. Town meeting and the warrant, they're, all of these eight items listed, actually, is there nine, would require boats to. listed, actually, is there nine, would require boats to place and recommend.
Well, if we want to move things forward, do we want to entertain placing this on the warrant? We're going to talk about our waterfront bond article, the 11.4 million dollars.
I'm okay with that, although I want to hear what Jeff and Shereen have to say.
I'll go ahead. This is, you know, when we started out with the previous bond, you know, we thought that that would cover all the costs of everything. And obviously, we've seen increased costs, design costs. The Fish Pier was a bit more than we had expected, I believe, as well as Trap Dock was and other things going forward. I don't think we've not been conscientious of, you know, costs along the waterfront. One of the things we have to keep in mind is, you know, our waterfront economy is very large, and it's supported by a lot of local businesses, and not just the commercial fishing, but recreation. I mean, you can just sit at the Cut at Stage Harbor, and there's virtually millions of dollars' worth of boats going in and out of the channel every Sunday. It's amazing the amount of activity we see along the waterfront here and probably every other. This is our, you know, like, this is a lot of money, but I think it's offset by the economic engine that supports it. So I'm going to be in favor of putting this on the warrant.
Yeah, I would echo Shereen's comments. The waterfront is part of our culture, part of our history, and really is an asset that needs to be protected the best way we can. So as fiduciaries in a waterfront town or water, hired by the Atlantic and Antucket Sound and Pleasant Bay, I mean, we're surrounded in the water by three sides in this town. It's extremely unique. And we spend a ton of money taking care of it, to be honest with you. And we've done a good job with it. We've done a good job supporting our commercial industries, and we've done a good job supporting our recreational industries. And Shereen mentioned the boat traffic coming out of Stage Harbor. And I happen to be over in Pleasant Bay now in Ryder's Cove. And I'll tell you right now, the traffic coming out of Orleans and Pleasant Bay, Little Pleasant Bay, and Chatham, Crow's Pond, Ryder's Cove is extraordinary. There are mooring fields in Pleasant Bay, mooring fields off Coach Pinnicott. It's just extraordinary how much it's grown. And they all need servicing. They all need to get to the shore. They need to go to a fuel pump. They need to access their boats. I mean, it's unreal. So the economic activity that's generated is extraordinary. I'd put a dollar value on it. It'd be really kind of a neat exercise. Never mind, when you think about Stage Harbor, what the four or five boatyards that are upstream from Stage Harbor that are absolute economic lifeblood of this town and service our residents and non-residents alike. So, you know, I took a pause at 90 Bridge tonight, I did. And, you know, you saw me. It's expensive. That's expensive. Now, that ultimately should be a crown jewel in this town. An upweller with history that is accessible, it should be a crown jewel. And so it should provide its own economic benefit to both public and private, you know. The upweller alone is just cool anyway. But to have it housed there in the future is going to be really cool. So, yeah, it's a lot of money. And as Mike noted, and Shereen noted, and Greg noted, we don't owe it till we spend it. But we won't have it if we don't put it on the warrant and tee it up. So I think it's a lot of money. I get it. But I think long-term, with Chatham, we'll be money well-spent for Chatham. I do worry about coastal resiliency. I do worry. I think Ted's comments about Ryder's Cove, and we have to really be thoughtful about what we build for the future, because I do believe that sea level rise is here to stay. And you can just watch the outer beach. Anyway, I would be, I'm in favor of putting on the warrant, and I will support it, and I will speak to it if needed. Thanks.
I think, I think this, I think, looking back at the previous bond, the model, the mechanisms, it allows us some flexibility to plan pivot. Instead of going project, go give approval, go back approval. Gives it that broader financial, you know, bank to work with, and we don't need to spend it all. And we, it is a lot of money. There's no two ways about it. And we're going to have to be people probably reminding us this is a lot of money, which it is, which it is. But I think mechanically, this is a good approach. I think we've been very successful. And like I mentioned a short time ago, we are also getting assistance from other sources, like the Seaport Economic Grants. And if we can continue our path of success and prove our due diligence in our work, you know, we will probably, hopefully, fingers crossed, be recipients of further grants in the future to help offset some of this. So I'm in favor of doing it. It's, you know, and we said it once, we said it twice. It's a lot of money. But I think this approach is a viable approach for us.
Yeah, we had a similar discussion back in 2017, and I think it has worked out well. I mean, we had some, you know, bumps along the way, particularly with respect to the Fish Pier. But there are protections for the tax pier. This has to go to town meeting. If town meeting doesn't like it, they can reject it. It requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, because it's a bond, right, Joe? And it has to go to the ballot in the town election the next, the next two days, events?
The Thursday after town meeting, there'll be a ballot.
And then it, nothing gets spent until it comes back to us on individual projects. So I will support it. It's a staggering amount of money, but as has been articulated, this is what it costs to live on the coastline.
All right. So why don't we make a motion to place this on the warrant?
Move to place.
We hear second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye, and Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. We want to entertain a motion to recommend?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Second. Further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metters? And Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
I say aye, too. Sorry.
Thank you.
Dredging. Motion to?
Move to place.
Place. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Vote to recommend?
Yeah, move to recommend.
We hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye, and Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Next warrant article is item three, prior year bills for free cash.
Sorry, I'm short. Prior year bills. I actually redid that because I just got some new ones today. So you should have the updated amount in front of you. So the prior amount was $1,048.25, and now it's currently $1,330.25. I do have all of the unpaid bills in front of me if you want to look at them. Do you want me to go through them, or?
I think we're good.
You're good? Okay. So the next on this same agenda is the stabilization fund appropriation.
I'll move to place.
Oh, sorry.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor placing, say aye. Select Board Member, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye, and Select Board De Castro?
Aye.
Did you vote?
Yes, I did. Would you recommend?
Second.
Second. Okay. Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Now, next, Consolidated Revolving Fund.
Consolidated Revolving Fund. So that is an annual one, and consists of, sorry, I have so many pieces of paper in front of me.
I can help you out, Carrie. So these are the revolving funds. Essentially, there's no change to what was presented in fiscal year '24. So we have the airport revolving fund at $150,000, the Basset House revolving fund for $8,000, Inspectional Services revolving fund for $150,000, Recycling revolving fund for $5,000, Marconi Station revolving fund for $10,000, and then the Waterways user fee, which we call the Wolf, revolving fund for $1,000. In the draft warrant article, Carrie's noted the balance.
The Waterways user fee is a million.
I'm sorry, a million dollars. In the article, Carrie has noted what the balances are for, closing now for FY '23, as well as FY '24, which is a current year through December 31st.
I just had a question about the Marconi Fund. What is that used for?
We have leases. I'm looking at, so the two houses, the MCI properties, I should say, they have a lease, and the lease that they pay goes into that fund.
This is from the Marconi Center?
The Marconi Center, and then?
There were some properties that are rented by private families, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Unless Carrie's not shaking me off yet.
Okay. Thank you. I moved to place this Consolidated Revolving Funds article on the warrant.
Second.
Second, okay. Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Would you recommend?
Move to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right.
Did we skip over the OPEB and Stabilization Trust Fund items?
Not yet.
No.
Further down.
We can do those.
Oh, you're looking at a different list. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Should I skip over the airport revolving fund?
That's where we are now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I thought we just did that.
Yeah, I had it listed, Carrie had it listed in her staff.
I think the memo is in the packet. We're in a different order. That's what's causing a little bit of confusion compared to what's on the agenda. But we haven't done the airport thing yet.
We're on that right now.
Well, it wasn't included in the list of funds that we, the revolving funds we just approved?
But the airport was separate, President?
So the ones that you're going to go over tonight are the capital requests from the airport that?
So I can clarify. So it looks like we have a separate agenda item for tonight. So there's Consolidated Revolving Funds is number C4, and C5 is the Airport Revolving Fund. But Airport Revolving Fund is the same as it was the amount last year? Yes.
So it's not a separate article?
It's not a separate article.
I'm sorry. I was wrong.
Actually, we just took Consolidated.
We voted it.
We're good. Okay. No, no, no.
Oh, all right, that's what.
It's included on the board.
Correct. Four and five are kind of collected.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So now we're going to go to six stabilization appropriation per policies.
Okay.
So are we going over the Stabilization Trust Fund? Okay. So this year, we're going to, we're putting forth $150,000 to be funding the Stabilization Trust Fund. And that money will come from the overlay, which has already been brought forth to the Board of Assessors, sorry, the Board of Assessors for approval.
So the reason for this is to bring it up to where it's supposed to be?
Correct, at the 5% of the operating budget. And so the financial policies adopted in 2012 set a goal that the minimum balance in the stabilization fund would be 5% of the operating budget. And with adding this 150, this, well, in 2025, it will actually be 5% of our operating budget for 2024. So.
Which would be in the dollar amount, what's the 5%, the dollar amount of what?
5% is the dollar amount of the operating budget for 2024, which was 40 million something.
Okay. So, just to clarify, normally, this 150K from the overlay would go to the OPEB.
Correct.
This is what we've done in the past. And that's a change this year. So the 150 for OPEB is coming from the tax rate?
Yes.
Yes, it was vice versa. So it was either one or the other.
For years, it's come from the overlay.
Right. So I think originally, we were just going to fund the stabilization, and then we decided that we were going to fund both of them.
And we decided it wasn't appropriate to have, to have it on the tax levy in order to fund the stabilization, which is a reserve fund. So we had funding available in the overlay account to transfer into the reserve fund, which is the stabilization account.
But you still wanted to put another 150K into OPEB?
We do. That's the next item.
The OPEB in the future is going to continue to come out of the tax, on the tax rate?
We're not sure yet. I think we can return to the overlay account. But this, and we probably won't do a transfer to stabilization every year. It's been, I think it's been five or six years since we've had to do that. So we'll, we'll look to see if we have other available funds for OPEB. And then when we revisit stabilization, it's, again, it's just compliance with our financial policies. But our reserves are good.
The stabilization is essentially the rainy day account.
It is.
It is.
All right.
Good.
Motion to place?
Motion, move to place.
Second. Second, okay. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Move to recommend?
Yep, motion to recommend.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Other post-employment benefits referred to as OPEB funding.
So the funding for that will be $150,000 from the tax levy to OPEB this year.
I just, Mr.?
Do you want to? Yep, go ahead.
I just, in the memo, I just really want to point it out for the benefit of the public that the surcharge, the surtax, the one and a half percent that remains from the old land bank, is bringing in $615,000 this year.
Correct.
And I, I think that goes to the foresight of the decision made back 2018 or 19 to help fund OPEB through that. And I think we're the only community in the Commonwealth that does this. We got a special act passed to do it. So.
Yeah, it's working really well, to be honest with you, Dean.
We're patting ourselves on the.
A little bit, yeah.
Cory smiled because it was Cory, myself, and Stephen, Daniel, and Sharon Brown, I think, were on the OPEB trust. But I think it made a lot of sense.
And when it was passed, it was, they looked at it as a reduction in taxes.
Yes, we gave, I consider that one of the greatest benefits in my nine years on this board, that we gave the taxpier a permanent $500,000 tax cut.
Okay, now it's getting a little obnoxious, Dean. But, no, honestly, it's good. It's really good.
I moved to place.
Second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Move to recommend?
Move to recommend.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Okay. To the airport capital articles, A, Chatham Municipal Airport Electric Vehicle, EV charging stations.
Yeah, this is Terry Whalen. He'll be going over his capital request for the airport. There is two articles that he will be presenting to you tonight.
We also have the Chair of the Airport Commission, Huntley Harrison.
Yep.
Good evening, Terry Whalen, Airport Commission Staff Liaison. So again, you do have a staff report in your package as well. And if you have a particular order, I do know the agenda looks like you have the EVs first. So if you want, prefer, we do that versus the maintenance capital?
We'll start with EV.
Okay.
Sure.
So again, this request is for the installation of EV charging stations at the Chatham Municipal Airport, basically directly, the parking lot directly across from this site. And the project includes the installation of three Level Two charging stations, serving six spaces, and two Level Two charging stations, excuse me, Level Three charging stations, which are the faster charging stations, serving for four spaces.
So just to be clear, it's 10 vehicles that can simultaneously be served?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
A total of 10. And the structure of the, or the funding approach here is, requires an upfront ask for 440,000, $700. This, the grants and credits and incentives structured... This... the grants and credits and incentives structured include potential... not potential, we actually have the grants in hand, signed for the Eversource and... Excuse me, Eversource and Mass DEP. So, once the project is implemented and completed, you can then file for the incentives, rebates, and credits, resulting in a net expected cost to the town of 115... approximately $115,550. So, that's how this... there's... the upfront ask is needed in order to implement the project to then become eligible for the funding.
Jeff, good question.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. So, it's $11,500, you know, a plug-in, a station, I should say. You can do 10 cars at once, 11,500 per. And I don't know what the market rate is or isn't for these stations, but I would ask. I mean, is that a deal or isn't it? And then, the other thing, and we'll probably get there eventually, but, you know, as mentioned last night, it's an out-of-the-way location. Well, maybe in some ways, a perfect location because it is out of the way and it's not, you know... anyway. I thought we'd have some discussion about that. Thanks.
Dean?
Well, no, actually, Shereen had her handle.
All right, let's go with Shereen and work her way around.
Okay, so, the grant is a DEP grant?
So, there are three different grants that... in that 325, 150, there's a Mass DEP EVIP grant, which basically pays for the charging... offset of the charging infrastructure. So, from the pad up, there's an Eversource grant that covers from the pad to the pole and all the infrastructure. And with some changes that came through with the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, the town is also eligible for payment in lieu of tax credits. So, there's a provision in there where municipalities, governmental entities, can basically get the equivalent of a tax credit that a private developer might get. So, that's the source of the... three funding sources essentially for... to offset the cost.
Not specific to the airport, meaning the grants were not saying, hey, airports, come and get charging stations? I mean, I'm just trying to say...
Right, no, these are not... these do not come... they're not FAA grants if...
Or anything pertinent to an aviation sort of grant opportunity. The reason why I'm asking is, you know, people are asking why the airport. And I'm thinking, well, maybe this is a specific grant program targeted to airports because they're transportation hubs, you know, mostly. And that's not the case.
No, I can address that. So, it's almost like a make-ready grant. So, the airport, as well as the Eldridge Garage, are on the same cycle. They were the two locations that were what we thought were ready to go. When we looked at 549 Main Street, there was some plans to do other parking lot improvements and so forth, but we felt that those two parking areas, the airport on the side, also access to the bike trail too, the new and approved bike trail that we're getting. And the Eldridge Garage was... were perfect, two separate locations, two areas of the town. Okay, thanks.
Got a quick follow-up. We have EVs in town. Where do we charge our EVs and would they use this facility?
They actually... so, the EVs that we have for our fleet are here at the annex upstairs. There's charging stations for them and as well as the police has an EV for their SRO program. And I think that's been installed or soon.
Right.
So, we have a plug-in that are hybrids.
Right.
And they're here at the annex. We also have one that doesn't have a separate charging station. It's an actual plug-in over at DPW. It's our pool car that we have that's used by the assessors and anyone that might need to travel within town or out of town for a seminar and so forth. It's called our pool car.
Are the police going to be needing to use the one across the street if it goes in?
Terry, is there an installation at the police station for a charging station or are they plugging into the building?
Again, they have my... in the outbuilding at the PD. So, they're not... right, so, again, the... and maybe I wasn't clear. The... these are all public...
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Public access, not for town vehicles.
Yeah, I just jumped in the way. I just wanted to know if there is a public, a municipal need for these stations across the street.
Oh, I'm sorry. Technically, for our fleet, no, because we have charging stations installed upstairs through the back parking lot.
Are they Level 2 or Level 3? Do we know?
2.
Level 2s. So, most communities actually have Level 2s, but the Level 3s and... This is an opportunity to bundle the Level 2s and Level 3s as well. With the work of a consultant, we're able to take advantage of getting funding for the Level 3s, both at this location and the project that's underway at the Eldridge Garage. If we separated them and waited, we would be paying more for the Level 3s.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike. I want to... I have other questions, but I'll defer those. But the... since we're on this point, as I understand, I don't have an electric car, a vehicle. The Level 3s charge faster. And I'm just wondering if the police department needs to have that nearby so they can charge faster.
So, they have a plug-in... it's a plug-in gas hybrid. So, they don't have a full EV, totally EV. So, there would be some... I don't know what you call redundancy, some safety factor in there. But my understanding on how they use the vehicle is that I don't believe they use it as a patrol vehicle. I'd have to defer to the police on that, but I don't believe they use it as a patrol vehicle.
It's the SRO, School Resource Officer Assigned Vehicle Used During the Day. I think that they will... if they need it at night or for a storm event or so forth, they will use it. And I... it might not be the case, but I thought we had one extra Level 2 charging station that was designated for the police department. But again, with the technology changing so fast, even if the vehicle can charge overnight, it's sufficient to last in a charge all day long. So, it's not that they have to keep going back to the station to charge.
So, I was going to ask if there was any possibility that it would be useful to the police or our employees here in this... in this... in this place, this building. I would also, just to follow on with that, I mean, what I hear is we think we have our needs adequately addressed at the moment. But it would surprise me if, in five years, that would necessarily still be the case. So, putting that to one side, and I'm actually thinking more about employees of this, you know, who work here, as well as people who... I mean, we have a lot of meetings here and a lot of people on committees who come here and, you know, could park across the street and plug in, whether they get a partial charge from, you know, a Level 2 or a full charge from a Level 3. I think, looking down the road, that's something that's well within the logic of this project, number one. The other thing is, I don't know, but... and perhaps you don't know either, but I would think that we probably could realize some revenue from this. I know there's a lot of other people that have their hands out as well, including Eversource. But I would have thought that the distributor at the point of sale is entitled to get something. And that's a benefit as well that is not... I mean, and not that you should have. I'm just saying, it will help to offset this.
Right, so, operationally, when there are in... you know, there will be some costs with... in the project budget, there is a five-year warranty built in with equipment. There's also service for the accounting processing and charging. So, back to the... you know, I think Chairman... excuse me. Select Board Member Shell's comment is there is... the... once they're operational, you know, the... there will be a charge for these stations, which will offset any maintenance or other operational costs for, you know, moving forward as they move into operation. And I noted in my staff report that we will be coming back for policy discussion on some of those questions you had about, you know, or related to how much we will charge, who can park where, those types of things. So, that's... that will be coming... and I don't have the date right in front of me, but that will be coming for the discussion for, you know, covering these public... both public installations and any future ones going forward.
Yeah, so, that should be coming to the board probably late March, early April, definitely before town meeting.
Dean?
I'll just... on that point, I would say we should charge if we can get a piece of it. I mean, we're providing this service. I don't think this should be a freebie to anybody. I'm somewhat conflicted on this. When I first read the packet, I guess, I don't remember, it was last week. I wrote "okay" on my notes, but then I was given some pause last night when the Finance Committee presented its report. And I had further conversation with the Chairman of the Finance Committee today just to get some further perspective on what drove that comment from them. I also talked with Katie because, as Shereen knows, we were both on the Eldridge Garage Committee. And early on, we supported and I supported putting the units at Eldridge. I couldn't remember how many there were and Katie gave me some information. So, there are eight over there, eight ports. And the Finance Committee asked some questions about why I put it here? Who's going to use it? We heard, you know, Lane Gibbs questioned who was going to use it earlier in the meeting. And Mike makes a good point about, which I hadn't really thought of, about people visiting this particular building, whether they're coming here for permits or other meetings, regulatory meetings or whether they're attending committee meetings. And I thought, you know, part of me wants to say, well, we've got eight over there downtown. And I happen to think downtown is a good location. And those are going to be in place sooner, right? The ones in Eldridge are going to be done, as you said earlier, or somebody said, by May or June, when that whole project is done. These will be... assuming this goes to town meeting and assuming it's voted in...
Right, we wouldn't be able to really start until July 1.
Yeah.
Yeah, when funding was available to start the process.
And part of the concern, according to what Stephen told me today, was on the partisan members and some members of the committee were very enthusiastic about it, was a philosophical one, which I sort of share, to be honest with you. But I don't want to get into a broader discussion of what, you know, what are the... we can have that. I do believe there's a need to make changes in the way we do things in this country. But I guess I would come down in favor of putting this to town meeting. And I guess I would support the recommendation. I guess that's the way I'll come down, but I do it with some reluctance, to be honest with you.
Because it's out of the way, Dean, or its location?
Because...
Or because it's an EV?
Because I question why the taxpayers... why this should be on the tax...
Okay.
That's all. It's $115,000. That's... we've spent more money than that on many other things. That's my philosophical consideration. But I would have said out of the way until Mike made his comments about...
Yeah, me too.
About this... because it is... for me, it's out of the way.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that was a very...
You can take a walk or a bike ride. You can plug in.
I think that was a very perceptive observation that Mike made about who comes here and whether they might make use of it. It's not just the people that are flying a plane over there.
There is one key point. It's 115 a unit, 115K for all of them. But should we receive revenues in return, then those costs would... certainly, the maintenance costs would be defrayed and perhaps we'd have a little... perhaps we'd defray the overall capital.
Yeah, I agree.
So, that... in my mind, it's fine. It's good. Go.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to add. Terry articulated it as recovering our costs of operation. But people don't go into business to recover their costs of operation. And I have to believe there need... there will be... there needs to be enough left over for us to, in effect, be recovering some of our capital costs over time. Or another way to think about it is generating a return on that capital cost.
There you go.
From the taxpayer's point of view, that's the argument.
Yeah.
Huntley, you have a comment, please?
Yeah, I... In terms of location, the reason the Airport Commission got involved in this was we're looking at long-term energy resiliency at the airport and sustainability. Some of you may know, we're thinking of a solar farm as a long-term project. Batteries, so that when power goes out for the airport, it can still be viable. The EV charging location, I think, really, we feel it's... for West Chatham, it's a good spot. We have the bike path. I know that people think it's just for the pilots. It's not. It could be for... definitely for someone flying, absolutely. They could come in, take a lesson, be gone for an hour, recharge their vehicle, and then they're on their way. People go to the restaurant, hang their bee. That's another reason. People go on the bike path. They can get on their bikes, ride, you know, for a couple of hours, come back, get their vehicle. I think 10 stations. There's some scalability there that we took advantage of financially. Because if we hadn't, it would have been a lot more expensive if, at some point down in the road in the future, that we wanted to say, oh, let's add the Level 3s now. But we had that. By putting it together, the incentives that we got from the government, the IRA incentive, 30%, that was, you know, it was almost something we couldn't say no to because it would have been much more expensive. And the location for people just coming and visiting the airport, it was another reason. So, we had, I felt, lots of good reasons to position it where it was. Especially if we... you know, people can walk across the street who work here, charge their vehicle, and then they go on their way. So, you know, for this side of town, I think it's a good complement to what's going on down at Eldridge. And I think it's forward-thinking. I know that there's been a lot of talk recently, and you hear on the news that General Motors is cutting back on their electric vehicles and Ford is cutting back. You know, some people say the hybrid vehicles are going to be better. I think in the long run, I think, when we look at the future, I think there's... based on what the federal government's doing and from what I've read, is that they're moving forward with the electric infrastructure for EV charging on major highways and so on. And, you know, revenue-wise, yes. I think the upfront costs, it's expensive. But I think with regard to revenue down the road, I think it'll wind up paying for itself. I'm hoping it will. And I think we all do. I think even at Eldridge, we're hoping that starts paying for itself. And I know the funding there is different than the funding that I'm requesting here for the Airport Commission. But I think it's a worthwhile project and I hope you support it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone entertain a motion to place this on the warrant?
Move to place.
Second.
Second, okay. Further discussion. All those in favor? Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Anyone move to recommend?
Yeah, move to recommend.
Second.
Second. Further discussion. All those in favor? Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Terry, one more article or warrant?
Yeah, hopefully, this one's a little simpler, more straightforward. Essentially, these are three maintenance projects at the airport. Electrical service repair for the administration building for the installation of a new sub-panel to upgrade an outdated electrical service, essentially bringing things up to code and consistent power supply. The second component of this request is a new emergency generator to power the... essentially, there's an existing generator right now that... an existing generator right now that powers some of the aviation components on the field. This second generator would have the facility have 100% capacity or power generation during storm events, or, you know, different types of power outages. So that would basically make it have, the facility have 100, 100% backup power. And the, the last request is a quantum roof repair. So just, this is just for repairing leaks in the building that need attention. So those are, are causing potential for damage within the, the maintenance hangar. So, and again, unfortunately, all these requests, we always look for other sources of money, as we've been hearing tonight. So these do, unfortunately, they don't fall under the Mass dot FAA, or even CPA, as they're all maintenance types of projects.
All right, questions or comments? Jeff?
Quick question, does that mean Hangar B is open when the, when the power's out?
Right, so now, right, so the full, the full, the full functionality would exist in a power outage, provided the generator, and again, which it should be, would, would, would go on.
Thank you.
I move to place.
Terry, a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye, move to recommend.
Second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. We have one last action tonight. We're gonna transition over to an executive session. We'll do the honors.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, small a, parentheses 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, parentheses, Chatham Permanent Firefighters International Association of Firefighters, Local 2712, and Chatham Sergeants and Police Officers, MCOP, Local 294, parentheses, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the select board, and the chair so declares with no return to open session.
Thank you very much. Terry, a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, going into executive session, Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right, and no return to public session. So, good night, everyone.